We'll stand for a moment of silent reflection and the pledge of allegiance led by Chief Deputy Brian Mueller.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is to review and approve the agenda. And to start with, we will not have item sixteen. The report from the Public Library liaison, that report was not available, so we will remove that from the agenda. Are there any other items that you wish to have removed from the agenda or amended in any way?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve the agenda as presented without deletion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented with item sixteen removed. Any further comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Hennies, Commission Office Manager. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and retain items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and a vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today, I've placed the following items for your consideration. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of May 7, 2013. Approval of the vouchers in the amount of $2,349,805.31. To acknowledge the order of organization and incorporation for the formation of the Cosmos Road District as presented by the auditor. To order the election for organization to be held on 7/23/13 for the Lois Lane Road District as presented by the auditor. To authorize the budgeted general fund operating transfers to the Road and Bridge Fund, the E-911 Fund, the accumulated building tower project fund, and the emergency management fund as submitted by the auditor's office. Number 10, to approve the 2013 Bradsky Road District agreement as submitted by the Highway Department. To approve the adopt a highway application for the 28th Aircraft Maintenance Squadron of Ellsworth Air Force Base for a one-and-a-half-mile section of Interstate 90 South, excuse me, Interstate 90 Service Road South as submitted by the Highway Department. Number 12, to approve the application for permit to occupy the right-of-way for the state senior games bicycle race as submitted by the Highway Department. And finally, number 13, to declare distress warrant number 642012 in the amount of $71.31 as collectible as submitted by the Pennington County Treasurer.
I think it was uncollectible.
Did I say uncollectible?
No, you said collectible.
Uncollectible.
Okay. We have the consent agenda and we do need to make a correction in the minutes. Do we remove that from the agenda to do so?
Yes.
So, any other items that you wish to remove from the consent agenda?
I'd like to remove my item 13 so we can discuss it.
Item 13 has been removed. Any others?
Ladies and gentlemen, Todd Schweiger. I was scheduled to appear with Habitat for Humanity on a lien release request. And Jay Alderman just pointed out some things to me that make that request unnecessary. It seems that the county has issued a tax deed in the property subsequent to the date of the last lien request, so that there is no need to ask for the release because the new deed's been issued. And so I thank Jay for doing my homework for me and I apologize to the commission for my oversight.
Thank you. Since we've already approved the agenda, when we get to that item, I will make a motion to...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda with item five and item 13 removed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with item five and 13 removed. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item five...
You want a motion for that?
Yes, please.
There was a slight error in the minutes that said that Commissioner Troutman made a motion and also seconded it, but Commissioner Holloway did second it, and I would make a motion that that's corrected. Has to do with that radio tower.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to correct the minutes on page four to indicate that Commissioner Troutman moved, made the motion, and Commissioner Holloway seconded the motion.
Ron wanted to know if I would second it also.
What did you decide? Okay. Motion and a second to make that correction. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 13.
Okay, I would just like to point out that the Treasurer's Office had issued 599 distress warrants for delinquent taxes. And the Sheriff's Office obviously works those distress warrants. They were able to satisfy all of the distress warrants except one. They collected $153,724.74. And the one uncollectible was a trailer house that burnt, and the taxes on that was, what was it? $71.31. So they've just done a great job, both the Treasurer's Office and the Sheriff's Office.
Very commendable. Do we have a motion in regard to that issue?
I'd make a motion to declare distress warrant 642012 in the amount of $71.31 as uncollectible.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Davis seconded it. Any further discussion?
That's a real picture upper, if anybody hadn't seen it.
Okay. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do we have any roll of drums or anything for the introduction of our new public defender? Would you, Eric, would you care to?
Thank you very much. My name is Eric Witcher. I appreciate the commission allowing me to come here and formally introduce myself. I, my first day was May 3, so I'm into my third week. It's an exciting position. I'm thrilled to be here, and I look forward to working with all of you. As a brief biography, I grew up here in Rapid City. I attended the University of South Dakota for my undergraduate degree studying political science and speech communications. I attended the University of Nebraska in Lincoln for law school, graduated in 1996. So I've been a practicing attorney for approximately 17 years, the last almost seven of which I was the director of the Public Defender's Office for Lawrence County in Deadwood. So I am, I'm used to working with an advisory board. I'm looking forward, we have our first meeting this Thursday, so I'm looking forward to working closely with them, as well as county commissions. I understand the, we have too few tax dollars, and so I know how to stretch budgets. I also know how to provide effective, efficient, high-quality legal services to the accused, and that's what I fully intend to do. So I want to thank you again for allowing me to come and introduce myself. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions or comments?
I'm on the board, and he has excellent resume and qualifications. I'm sure he's going to do a great job. He says that he's off with his dad every day. So if he gets something wrong, I will, I have a way to get to him.
There wouldn't be kind of a bribe involved in this, would there?
I didn't know it till afterwards.
Welcome, Eric.
Thank you very much.
Protect yourself at all times.
I will do so. Thank you.
Next item is item 15, and Commissioner Buskerud, you said you would dispose of that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, I guess, deny the lien release request. I don't know what else to do with the applicant's consent.
Second.
Motion and a second to deny the lien release request with the applicant's, at the applicant's request. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 16 has been removed. So we move to item 17, and that's the first reading in public hearing on the amendments to the Pennington County Air Quality Ordinance, number two.
Could I get the computer? Good morning. My name is Kristen Cowan, and I'm the air quality specialist for the city of Rapid City. And the air quality ordinance has been reviewed and changes have been approved by the air quality board and recommended to be made change to the county ordinance and the city ordinance. What I wanted to do was to take these proposed amendments to the county board before I take them to the city board, or to the city council, so that when I take it to the city council, I can say that we also had the Pennington County Board's approval because there are two air quality ordinances for this, for the Rapid City area, which includes just a portion of Pennington County, and I wanted to show a map of that area. So what these amendments do is, what the board wanted was to consolidate redundant sections and reorganize the ordinance for readability. Also, they wanted to provide for the use of an objective measure of smoke capacity when responding to smoke complaints. The air quality specialist position is already required to be certified in this EPA method nine. These changes also further clarify the location-specific nature of the Pennington County Code Number 12 and the intergovernmental agreement between the city and county. And this change also proposes to return open burning permission in the air quality control zone outside of the Black Hills National Forest Fire Protection District to the respective volunteer fire departments, which are North Haynes, Box Elder, and Rapid Valley volunteer fire departments. So the blue dash line is the air quality control zone, so it includes the city of Rapid City as well as portions of the county. So Pennington County Ordinance Number 12 is only specific to that blue square. So the changes we made clarify that the air quality ordinance only pertains to the air quality control zone and not anything outside of the air quality control zone.
Question for you before you move that. Why is, why is that little section there on the upper right-hand corner?
It's Box Elder.
That's Box Elder?
Mm-hmm. And it's, the legal description excludes Box Elder.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have one other question, too. Does this include the Rapid City landfill?
It does.
Has there been any testing done around it since the fire's been going out there for a week?
From, I've heard from Department of Environment and Natural Resources representatives here that they have been monitoring the, continuous monitor that we have on the west side, but I don't know that they've taken any monitors out to the landfill yet.
I bet it would show it was smoky.
Yes.
I have a question.
It's prevailing winds from the northwest across to the southeast. That's understandable. They might not want to take a test of that.
I have a question, too. TJ, you know, it strikes me as not right. Something's not right about setting up an ordinance, regulating certain things in part of the county, but not in all of it. We can do that, huh?
Jay Alderman with the State's Attorney's Office. Ordinarily, I would have the same reservation, in fact, dead going into this. But in looking at Chapter 34A, which is the air pollution control chapter, it's very clear that it calls for a coordinated program of air pollution prevention with city, local, and even federal agencies, and there's a number of statutes that talk about site-specific application of rules and regulation in coordination with state DNR. And we've done that, and so I would agree with your comment, except for I think there's a number of exceptions that allow for site-specific controls where they're most vulnerable, where the non-containment areas are most vulnerable, and that is definitely this area. And I, I think maybe Kristen or someone else that might be here could speak to some of the specifics of why that's necessary because of what's going on around this area.
I understand, and it makes perfect sense, but, you know, not all of our state laws are constitutional.
Really?
Whatever.
Any other questions or comments? Do you have anything further?
I also brought the intergovernmental agreement, or I put it in this PDF. So this is the joint intergovernmental agreement from 2000 and provides for a joint program between the county and city.
So just to clarify for myself at least, this proposed amendment to the ordinance, do we have to take an action today that gets you where you need to be with the city?
I'm not for sure.
This is, Mr. Chairman, this is the first of two readings. So historically, what you would do is a motion just approving the first reading, and then it'll have one more reading, what, June 6, I suppose, is our next commission meeting? And then that's when you could finally approve the ordinance. And then by statute, the ordinance would go into effect 20 days after publication of that final approval.
Mr. Chairman, just to get it on the road, and we'll have two more weeks to look at this thing. I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the amended ordinance.
Second.
Second.
Any further?
Also, if I might, I know it's in the cover letter, but it is interesting that all the years of this coordinated effort, I think you might have seen April 26, Rapid City was named as one of four U.S. cities with the best overall air quality. And that's, that's pretty impressive when you think about...
That was before the fire started.
That stems from that coordinated effort all these years.
Sure. And maybe I'm complicating this. We'll go ahead and act on the motion and the second if there's no further discussion.
Good morning. My name is George Farabee, and I've got a couple of questions. My first question is for this, has this been coordinated with the State Wildland Fire Coordinator?
It's been coordinated with the Pennington County Fire Administrator, Denny Gordon.
My question, has it been filed, has it been sent through the State Wildland Fire Coordinator? He has jurisdiction over me. And when there's an air quality alert, my burn permit ceases. And that's why it should be coordinated through him.
This doesn't cover you, George.
My burn permit, when I agree to a burn permit, it says that if an air quality alert, and see, this is the problem I have, enforcement, somebody picks up this burn permit and says, "An air quality alert." I know it doesn't affect me. You and I know that, but how many of Deputy Brian's, Deputy Sheriff Brian's people know that?
They're all pretty smart, and I'm sure they'll figure it out.
Just like last fall, anyway. I'd like for this to be coordinated with the State Wildland Fire Coordinator.
I suppose we'd share send on drop.
It should have his approval because of, have his jurisdiction over me and those of us west of 79. Second comment, a question is, what is the statutory authority for the county to have this ordinance? Where in 7-8-20 does it say that the county has the authority to enact this ordinance?
I think Jay answered that.
It's actually, it's Title 34A, it's not 7.
I heard what you said, 34A. The chapter that talks about counties is Title 7, 7, the chapter 7-8. And I agree with Ron. I don't think it's constitutional to, absolutely agree with Ron, that ordinance should apply to all of us. Thank you.
I believe for the record, it's 34A-1-36 where it specifically talks about counties by ordinance doing exactly this.
We trust you, Jay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Next item is item 18, criteria for classification of lands as agricultural. Who's going to speak to that?
Shannon Rittberger, Director of Equalization. I have provided some information to the commission regarding this subject. I don't have any presentation, but I'll certainly answer questions about the information that I provided.
You want to, you want to kind of go through and, and give a summation of the parcels? Currently, our minimum acreage criteria for agricultural classification is 40 acres, and you've given us some information here if it was moved up to 160 acres. Can you kind of go through and tell us how many parcels that'll affect and some of the, some of the information you've put in this booklet?
Okay. The statute in South Dakota sets up the criteria for an ag classification. Three criteria, two of which, any two of which have to be met. The issue here is the acreage requirement. State statute sets a minimum acreage of 20 acres, but allows the county commission to raise that to 160. Currently, Pennington County is at 40. What my office has done is, is we have identified all of the properties that a change in this acreage requirement might affect. I can't, I can't tell you that the properties we've identified in here will be changed from an ag classification to non-ag. In fact, a lot of them won't be, but we don't know exactly which ones or how many. So what, what we've done is we've identified all of the ag parcels under 160 acres. Then we eliminated those properties that we think won't be affected because a parcel might be 80 acres, but owned by an individual that owns an 80 next to it, and therefore, the two together would be 160 and not affected by a change in the acreage classification. To the best of our ability, we identified all of those and eliminated those out of here. We also eliminated a few of parcels along the county boundary where a property owner might own more acreage over that 160 limit in another county. The resulting number we got here is provided here. We've identified, I think, 466 property owners that might be affected by this. Now, we know that some of these property owners will have more acreage than 160 acres, but we don't know that yet. We also know that quite a few of these property owners will meet the criteria for an income. One-third of total gross family income comes from ag production, but we don't know that on these property owners without talking to them first. So 466 property owners might be affected by this.
Any further discussion?
Well, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think it's a good idea to raise it up. I don't think it's going to affect anybody that's a real agricultural person out there. In this part of the world, you cannot claim to be an ag person on 40 acres of land. Unless you're growing trees, well, I tell you, out here, every parcel of land is trees, and I'd like to claim my house as ag because I got trees on that. And some of them, during the equalization process, hadn't cut a tree since 1999, so I find it a little bit difficult to believe that they're in the tree-raising business. Do they have trees growing on their property? Of course. So I think it's a good thing. I think it's going to save everybody, not everybody, a lot of people in the county some tax money, because I guess our, my proposal would be that the amount of extra money that we get in some taxes from this property is not spent, but it is used to reduce taxes on everyone else in the county. And I, after, I think it's just a matter of equalization, and after sitting through equalization this year, I believe it's the right thing to do.
Just a comment, I guess, I think what Commissioner Buskerud just said, I agree with him. In addition, I think our current process, and again, from sitting through those equalization hearings, I think our current process of having it at 40 acres just makes liars out of a lot of good people. I mean, they come in and have to stretch the truth to try to get their 40 acres classified as ag land. The other thing I think it does, or I think what we're doing right now is we're not treating the rest of the taxpayers fairly. We're giving an unfair advantage to those people between 40 and 160 acres in the tax break that vast majority of the rest of the citizenry do not get. It's amazing to me, when you look at some people on ag classification of the land, they can have, they can have 52 acres, for example, and their land assessment is $18,000. And I realize that I live in, inside the city of Rapid City, I've got less than a half acre, and mine is $100,000. So not just me, but everybody else that lives in one of these municipalities is paying a tremendous amount for their land. I think these people that have went outside of the city limits and purchased land, and now all of a sudden, they classify it as ag land, just put their house on and have, don't have neighbors very close to them, that they get away with as low as $17 an acre in their land value for tax purposes. So I'm going to support, I'm going to support the effort to move this up.
Mr. Chair? I'd just like to follow up on Commissioner Holloway and Commissioner Buskerud, and I agree totally with this item to raise this to 160 acres. And I believe that there's lots of homeowners in Pennington County that are paying taxes for other people to cover their playhouses. And we had a couple of instances of that during equalization hearings where we had people with farms back in eastern part of the state that come out here and bought 40, 50, 80 acres and wanted it ag, so they had a place to come out and play and snowmobile and ATV and stuff in the hills, but still only have to pay ag taxes on it. And I believe that we can change this to 160 acres, and I think we can reduce the taxes to just about everybody in Pennington County and not hurt any guaranteed ag individual while we're doing it. Thank you.
I would just say, Commissioner Davis, it's going to reduce everybody's taxes, but the 466 people is going to start paying their fair share.
Go along with that.
And part, and, Mr. Chairman, part of the problem is, when you look at, here's 52 acres, $17 an acre, but they have an $820,000 house on it. Here's one that's 42 acres, $52 an acre, nine, a million-dollar house on that property. Something is haywire.
When the primary use of this land is a million-dollar house, I think it's high time that it does something other than ag.
What, is this, what do we need, a resolution?
No, this is just a motion and a vote. The state law says that it allows the... The state law says that it allows the commission to change the acreage. I, I am not an expert in county ordinances, but this is, this is not a county law. The state allows the commission to change this.
I don't have that in front of me, but I'm, if it doesn't specifically require some kind of ordinance or resolution, do you have the?
I have the statute here. The statute is ten-six, thirty-one point three, and it's the third criteria.
The county commission may increase the minimum acre requirement up to one hundred and sixty acres. I would think you could do that by motion.
This is only one criteria to be ag, and there are two other ones that they can meet if, if they are indeed in agricultural business. So, I want to make a motion that we increase the criteria for classification of lands as agriculture to one hundred and sixty minimum acres.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, and ordinarily, I would hand the gavel over to the vice chair in order to make comments, but since she's not here, with your indulgence, I will comment.
You can do it.
And I think we're moving rather quickly on this. I think there are many ramifications that need to be examined. I think getting this report as of last week and taking action on it today is not wise. But we do have a motion and a second, and if there's no further discussion, I will call for a vote. Rule call, please.
Busker?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Holloway?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Yes. If I could just have a moment of indulgence here, I'd just like to bring up an item that says that, that there'd be ninety-six million dollars in estimated new growth in assessed value in Pennington County if this passes. And that means exactly what Commissioner Holloway said, that we'd take those four hundred and some odd dump and out and make them pay their fair share, and we could reduce the property tax in Pennington County with this ninety-six million dollars of new growth. And that's one of the items that I was looking at. Any further discussion? If not, item nineteen.
Good morning. Julie Pearson, Pennington County Auditor. Before you today is the official hearing scheduled to supplement the general fund mountain pine beetle budget from revenue supported from the state of South Dakota. This is only the dollar amount that we've received to date, so we will have these forthcoming through the year as more money is available as we spend our, our match dollars. The amount is for two hundred and one thousand dollars, and again, that is from non-budgeted revenue received in the current year. This is the new state law that, or, yes, the new state law that went into effect where the state is matching some of our expenses. And this gives Scott the spending authority to use those dollars.
Any questions or comments?
I make a motion to approve the supplement to the 2013 general fund mountain pine beetle budget, amount of two hundred and one thousand dollars to non-budgeted revenue received this year.
Is there a second? Yes, Mr. Chair, there is. Second by Commissioner Davis. Any further discussion?
Scott apologizes for not being here, but he's at a mountain pine beetle jamboree. Doing something with mountain pine beetles, so we presented it for him.
Hearing no further discussion, those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item from the treasurer.
Since Janet is in Pierre for the spring workshop.
Well, she's in two places at once.
Good morning, Janet Saylor, county treasurer. I was in Pierre last week. This is some information that, that I'm bringing to you. Last Wednesday, when we were in Pierre at workshop, we were approached by a Joe Masuka, who is the excise tax policy analysis for the Internal Revenue Service. Mr. Masuka brought with him a memorandum of understanding that would make the treasurers across the state responsible for verifying all information on twenty-two ninety heavy excise tax. We would have to make sure that all the correct taxes were collected, all the VIN numbers on the vehicle were correct, were correct. We would have to figure the fees for each one of these vehicles, and this would eliminate people from going down to the federal building to the IRS office, which they said would be easier for the taxpayers. Well, lo and behold, it's not going to be easier for the taxpayers because it's really not going to change anything. Any tonnage sticker over twenty-eight tons has to come out from the Division of Motor Vehicles in Pierre. It has to be stamped by the IRS before they will ever issue the tonnage stickers for these vehicles. In essence, I questioned Mr. Masuka during the meeting, and I asked him, what's the person in the Rapid City office going to do if the county treasurers are going to take over their jobs? And he gave no answer. My second question to him was, what's the IRS going to pay us for administering this? We would have to collect all the paperwork, submit it all to the IRS office, make sure the money balanced, make sure all the paperwork was correct, and his reply was, nothing, we might reimburse you for the postage stamps. So, in his memorandum of understanding, he's requesting that the treasurers, and this was given to every treasurer across the state, that we sign a memorandum of understanding to do the work that the IRS is now doing. This is not going to change anything. The Division of Motor Vehicles in Pierre is not in favor of this. It's not going to speed up anything for the taxpayers. They're still going to have to wait on their stickers. And I, I just wanted to make sure that the commissioners were aware of this in case anything came up at your meetings, stating that the county treasurers had voted not to proceed with this.
I'm just a little bit confused, though. You said this is not going to change anything. What, what did?
What, what he approached to us, he said it's going to be easier for the taxpayers. Instead of them going to the IRS and filling out the paperwork there and then bringing it back to the county treasurer's office to license, that they could just come here and we would do the paperwork for them, and that we could print their stickers for twenty-eight tonne and above. That's not going to change. Until that sticker, until that, this application is stamped by the IRS, the stickers cannot be given, and they have never been given from the county treasurer's office. Everything has to be verified according to the federal highway from Deb, Deb Hilmer in Pierre.
So even if this change was made where the people come up and fill the application out of your office, you'd still have to, they'd have to take it back over to the IRS to get stamped?
No, we would send it into the IRS in Chicago, and they would have to wait until it was stamped and sent back.
And then, then the taxpayer'd have to come back in again?
They would have to wait for the stickers to be issued from Pierre, which would be longer than it is right now. And in essence, we're doing the work for the IRS.
I mean, it looked like their idea was they were going to try to make it more convenient, but in essence, it's not going to make it more convenient, it's going to be more time-consuming.
It's going to be more time-consuming for the taxpayer, plus it's going to be more time-consuming for the county treasurer's office.
Probably just another example of efficiency in federal government.
So, it's just for information to the commissioners in case you hear about it.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Janet, aren't you just a little bit afraid that you might wind up on the IRS investigation group like the Tea Party did this last week, defying the IRS? How dare you?
I guess.
Would you like to have a motion that this commissioner supports your actions, maybe the rest of them?
I, I don't know how many of the treasurers are taking this back to their group. We're, we're going with the recommendation of the Department of Revenue.
The Department of Revenue doesn't like it either.
No. They said it's not going to change, it's not going to change anything.
And the government, federal government was going to save money and, and save the taxpayers some time, yeah, fine, but if it's not going to do any of that.
And it probably is going to save them money because they're not going to have to have that person down there doing these.
They're going to have it in Chicago, they're going to have it down there.
It's all would be done by the county treasurer's office, so why would the person have to be at the federal building?
Mr. Chair. Mark, I'd like to ask you what you think about that legally. I'm not too sure that they can force the county to do anything without going through the state legislature.
I don't think they're forcing us.
Oh, they aren't? They're telling you to do it.
Right now, they're proposing a memorandum of understanding. They're asking us to sign off on it. Thankfully, our treasurer read it, and hopefully we'll not be signing off on it. So that's the, whether they'll try to force us down the road, or whether there'll be the carrot and stick approach that they frequently follow by withholding certain funds if we don't sign into certain agreements.
Would you say that?
That would come later.
Would you say that basis is a contract?
Essentially, what they're proposing is a contract.
Okay, then I, I'm not too sure that the treasurers can sign a contract according to state statutes.
Yes, they can.
Can they?
But I don't think you have to worry about whether.
You can, they can, they can sign a contract requiring the county to do this?
Just a minute, let's, let's.
No, I'm asking.
Get this a little organized here.
Are you done? I think they understood what I was talking about, so yeah.
Do you want me to answer that, Lindell?
Yes, please.
Yes. County elected officials can sign their own contracts. They don't have to come to the board.
But if they have to spend money in their budget doing it, and that can be removed from the budget by the commissioners?
Yes, and we can also take you to court for that. But they have a.
I seem to remember one state's attorney threatened to do that, but didn't go very far.
Yeah, depends upon what the issue is.
Anything further? Thank you, Janet.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is the Pennington County 2014 budget. Okay, we'll move on to the next request, or item number twenty-two, request to waive administrative fees, and Mr. Ernest Frye.
Hi. I bought a house here in Pennington County, January 2012. It went through closure, fine, nobody said anything, and then we went to have a room addition added, and it turns out that it violates the setback. The house, the foundation, was built in nineteen seventy-seven. The house burned in 2004, was rebuilt in 2005 on the existing basement, so the structures remained in the same place. So I had to pay an eight hundred dollar penalty for violating the setback. So I would like to get that waived and get my money back, because, again, I had no control over the original house being built. All I did was simply buy a house.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Dan, I have a question for you. In nineteen seventy-seven, was that setback required?
Yes, it was, but even then, the building permit showed that it was thirty-three feet from the property line.
And, Mr. Frye, did you, did you go through a title search and a survey of that property?
Yeah, First American Title did the closing.
And who done the survey?
FISC. FISC did the original.
Did the last.
He showed that it was within the twenty-five foot?
No, they showed it at twenty-three six.
Okay.
FISC showed it at twenty-three six?
Correct.
That was just recently. They're the ones that last did the survey.
No, I mean, at the time you purchased it, did you?
That is correct, yeah. They did a location survey and they showed it at twenty-three six.
This, you are having your variance come before you today for the Board of Adjustment for this very property, and the staff report explains the whole circumstances that happened. It was a grandfathered house. It was legal non-conforming because it was built prior to ninety-four, and then, of course, it burnt down. Then, once it burnt down, it's supposed to meet their, then the requirements of the zoning. While they came in for a building permit, the building permit showed that they were going to be more than twenty-five feet from the property line, building it on the exact same foundation as the existing house that burnt down.
Whoever applied for the building permit was less than truthful.
I don't know that.
Well, either it is or it isn't meet the.
The house didn't move.
I, they, the survey was done after the new house was built. According, all the other site plans, the building permit that was originally done back in, I believe, seventy-seven, showed that it was more than twenty-five feet from the property line.
But you just said that it was a grandfathered as a non-conforming.
Well.
Prior.
Yeah, because we now know that it's less than twenty-five feet from the property line. We didn't know that before, until this recent survey that was done by FISC.
So what was the grandfather then for?
Well, because it physically was less than twenty-five feet from the property.
When does it, when did the grandfathering non-conforming, when, when was that issued? When was that approved?
Oh, it's, it's, there's not a permit or anything, that's just the way it was. There's nothing in writing saying that it was legal non-conforming. Every indication to us before was that it met all requirements of the zoning ordinance. It met, you know, as far as we knew, it was more than twenty-five feet from the property line.
Yeah, I thought you just said a few minutes ago that it was legal non-conforming because, because it, it was before nineteen ninety-something or another.
Correct, because it was always physically less than twenty-five feet from the property line, which we didn't know. We didn't know that it was.
You, you've never issued a legal non-conforming status for this property?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Who issued the building permit to build, rebuild the house?
Well, I believe it was in somewheres between two thousand, I'd have to look through the staff report.
It was in two thousand four.
Two thousand four.
So, Pennington County issued the building permit?
Oh, correct, yes. Pennington County issued the building permit.
Apparently, apparently, we didn't check the setback, we just took their word for it when they, when they.
Which we do with all building permits.
Do we know? Did, did, do we, did you look at the building permit application for this property to see what was listed on the application?
Yes.
And did it list it as what?
It was listed it more than twenty-five feet from the property line.
And who signed that?
I believe our past planning director, which was.
No, I mean, the, the application.
Whoever the builder was at the time. I'd have to pull the building permit.
See, Mr. Chair, my, my problem with all of these has been that this gentleman probably shouldn't be stuck with the eight hundred dollars, but neither should the taxpayers of Pennington County. It should be the person who lied on the application. That's the person you need to go get the money from, but.
Wouldn't this, wouldn't this gentleman have to be able to take him, take that person into court for the eight hundred? I would think that was a cause of action.
Do we have a motion?
That's what keeps attorneys in business.
Well, I can tell you that it's going to cost him a lot more than eight hundred dollars just to get him to sign on to help you. Again, this is another one of those deals that I've been protesting, that we're fining people for doing things that weren't involved in the initial scheme of things, and it bothered me. Do we have a motion? We do now that you've said that. I make a motion to, to give the gentleman his money back, his eight hundred dollars. To waive the administrative fees. Mm-hmm. Is there a second? I'll second it.
To clarify, it should be actually penalty fees, because the, he still had to go through the normal variance process, and he, he, he paid all of that, but the eight hundred is all the penalty fees.
The eight hundred dollars is all penalty fees?
Correct.
Okay, Karen, are we on track? Okay, we have a motion and a second to waive the penalty fee of eight hundred dollars. Any further discussion? Not those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried, it was three to one.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is items from planning and zoning. Ed Wer.
Chairman, we're waiving.
Yep. You guys wanna talk some more? Or do you wanna take a recess?
Might as well take a recess.
Do you wanna do committee reports, or some of that at the interim, or you got 40 minutes?
What you wish.
Let's take a recess first, and then maybe, I don't know, do we have exec, any executive? And maybe we could come back and go into executive session.
Was that a motion to recess?
Motion to recess.
Second?
Second.
Adjust our time, I'll ask for a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into the executive session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Session?
Second.
Motion and a second to come out of executive session, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Since we're still ahead of schedule, we'll move to committee reports. And, or items from the chair, I, I don't have anything at this point, so Commissioner Holloway, do you have any committee reports? You know, I don't. Well, on this Friday at noon, in Sturgis is the Black Hills Association of County Commissioners meeting. And I wasn't at the last meeting, but I see I was nominated to be the chairman again, I really appreciate that.
I did everything I could for you.
I thought by missing the meeting, I'd get out of that. But anyway, I hope to see everybody there, I guess, so.
The only thing really that I have to talk about is the Military Affairs Committee and lots of retirements and change commands and things on that order at the, at the base and with the guard, and that's about it.
Okay. I missed the last RC&amp;D meeting, so I can't have a report on that, but, um, the County Weed and Pest Board met, they have a, I've forgotten the date exactly, but they have a new chairman, and, uh, they're busy working on their spraying programs along highways. Everything seems to be in order, and, um, the good moisture interferes a little bit with the spraying, but it, it appears we're gonna have another good, good job done. The clock is a little slow. What's that? Somebody reach up there and. Yeah, it's a little slow.
How about covering items from the public?
Well, that might, uh.
Yeah, that might go past 10:30, huh?
Might take us past the time, but, um, with the consensus of the board, we can take items from the public, so. Does anyone from the public wish to address the commission at this point in time? Okay. We could do the consent calendar, can we? Uh, let's partner.
No, because people might wanna pull something out.
Okay, if we, the only time constraint we have is, um, as a Board of Adjustments, Holly, can we jump to the planning and zoning consent agenda? Can't do that either. Okay. Well, we'll just be at ease for five minutes. Six. Chair will entertain the motion to go into a Board of Adjustment.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into a Board of Adjustment, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Dan?
Good morning, Dan Jensen, Pennington County Planning Director. Item A is a variance request, 1307, Ernest and Linda Frye to reduce the minimum required front yard setback from 25 feet to 23 feet to bring in an existing single-family residence into compliance. He would like to construct an addition onto the rear side of the property, of the residence. And staff is indicating that if you approve this, we'd like one condition attached. It's located at 8710 Highland Hills Road.
You said the motion go what?
No, I said if you approve, we'd like to have this one condition attached.
Okay.
I don't know. Right here.
It's a 2.0 acre parcel. This is the property that you just heard earlier today regarding the waiver of fees. This house was built back in 1977, it burned down, uh, and then was rebuilt back in 2004. Every indication was is that it met the required setback. Recent surveys showed just recently that it is actually less than 25 feet. Required setback is 25 feet, and so in order for him to get a building permit, he asked to bring the property into compliance, and thus needs this variance in order to proceed. It is 23 feet from the property line, supposed to be 25 feet.
Looks like it's just on that one corner, huh?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve this variance, uh, to only apply to the portion of the front yard setback required that is being encroached upon by the existing single-family residence.
There a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Any comments? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Motion to come out of Board of Adjustment?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn as a Board of Adjustment, any further discussion? Not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
The Board of Commissioners uses the consent agenda to act upon non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of the Board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item B is a minor plat and subdivision regulation variance, Cider Sisters, Linda Schmutt, as the agent, approval is recommended. Item C is a first reading in a public hearing of rezoned 1304, Cider Sisters, Linda Schmutt, approval is recommended. Item D is a minor plat and subdivision regulation variance, Lois McVeigh, Marv Matkins, and approval is recommended. Item E is a first reading in public hearing of rezoned 1303, Lois McVeigh, Marv Matkins, and approval is recommended. Item F is a first reading in public hearing of rezoning 1309 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1303, Celia and Alan Bradley, approval of the applicant's withdrawal. Item G is a subdivision regulation variance, David Merchant, Davis Engineering, partial approval is recommended. Item H is a first reading in public hearing of rezoning 1308, David Merchant, Davis Engineering, as the agent, and approval is recommended. Item I is a layout plat, 1304, and subdivision regulation variance, 1301, Jarvis and Francis Olson, Fisk Land Serving as the agent, and approval is recommended. Item J is a first reading in public hearing of rezoning 1302, Jarvis and Francis Olson, Fisk Land Serving as the agent, to be continued to the July 5th Commission meeting. Item K is the first reading in public hearing of rezoned 1305 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1301, Jude Wildman, and denial is recommended. Item L is a layout plat, 1310, Grant Bolt and Greg Bolt, Bolt Racing, Inc., and approval is recommended. Item M is a first reading in public hearing of rezoning 1307 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1302, Grant Bolt, Craig Bolt, Bolt Racing, Inc., and approval is recommended. Item N is the first reading in public hearing of rezoning 1306, Doug Sletton, and this is to be continued to the June 6th Commission meeting. Item O is a first reading in public hearing and ordinance amendment 1301, Pennington County, to amend ordinance 17, flood damage prevention ordinance, to update and adopt the new D firms, and approval is recommended.
Okay, does anyone have any items on the consent agenda that they wish removed?
Jude Willam, item K, please.
Item K, anyone else, any others?
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda for planning and zoning with the removal of item K.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item K, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried. Item K.
Item K is a first reading in a public hearing of rezoning 1305 and 13, Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1301, Jude Wildman. This is to rezone 9.5 acres from General Ag District to Highway Service District and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from planned unit development sensitive to Highway Service District to allow for a commercial use of rental cabins on the property. Planning Commission recommended denial of this and asked that he apply for a planned unit development on the property and that the fees be waived in order to apply for that PUD. It's located at the intersection of Highway 16 and Silver Mountain Road, just across from where the helipad was gonna be going in. It includes 9.5 acres. He originally wanted to put, or wants to put vacation home rentals, he also wanted to live on the property, on this property. However, staff has to look at it as a point of view that it would allow for all those highway service zoning, zoning uses with just approval of a building permit. And, uh, at the same time, this is right across from where the helipad property was, which was rezoned, I believe about two years ago, to highway service. At that time, staff also recommended denial of that, however, it did get approved. We still feel this is spot zoning in the area, and staff did recommend denial of this rezoning request.
You got the pictures, Dan?
Yes.
So Dan, if he goes through the planned unit development phase, then would he still have to come back for this rezone?
Yes. It's a rezone to a planned unit development, but the PUD is very specific as to what the uses would be. There'd be conditions attached. If it's just rezoned to highway service, any of those uses allowed in a highway service zoning districts are just an outright allowed use. Does not ever come back to here, and all those uses would just be allowed.
So if we put the highway service zoning in this, could he put the helipad there?
Not without a conditional use permit.
I'm waiting to see a picture. He can't put it.
This is Silver Mountain Road right here, this is Highway 16. Silver Mountain Road actually comes off right here and then goes along here, and here's Boulder Hill Road. This is the property in question. This is the site where the helipad was going to be on the property, which was rezoned to highway service at that time. This is already highway service and it has those vacation home rental properties on it and a residence. Access right now to the property comes off right at this intersection. It was never approved by County Highway Department, because it is right on the intersection. There is some discussion as to where to move that and how to get access to the property. But there is a road right now, and it goes up the hill, very steep property, or not real steep, but it is steep all the way, and it is a hillside up to the top. Go to the next picture. As, this is Boulder Hill Road, Silver Mountain, this is the current access, uh, are from Silver, Silver Mountain Road on the Highway 16. I don't know if you remember, but when the helipad was being discussed, there was discussion as to moving this whole intersection to, and working with this property owner to put a whole new intersection on that, but that has not happened yet, but it was certainly discussed with DOT. Right now, the property comes off right here and goes up this hillside. Some more pictures. This is looking towards Highway 16, this is Silver Mountain Road, the access to the property is right here. Next picture, looking east on Silver Mountain Road, this is Boulder Hill Road, access to the, to Boulder Hill. This is looking straight up the property. Boulder Hill Road is right here, Silver Mountain runs this way. The fire didn't go through a portion of the property when Battle Creek fire. This is up on the property, looking down, Boulder Hill Road is right here, here's Silver Mountain Road. You can see, this is the intersection of Boulder Hill and Silver Mountain, and this approach comes right into the middle of the intersection. Is there any more pictures? Planning Commission had suggested that they apply for the planned unit development where they can put conditions on it, and, uh, then he doesn't have to go through the rezoning as far as highway service. It'd still have to be rezoned to this PUD, but then at that very moment, or when the PUD is done, they attach conditions to it, which limit the use to that very use of whatever he's requesting.
Any other questions? Gentleman who, Mr. Wildman, is he here?
Yes.
I couldn't see him.
Oh, sorry.
You wish to comment, sir?
Uh, yes, uh, I guess, uh, I guess I'm looking more or less the standard of what you require for highway service, because I guess my thought was when I applied for it was that when you have, uh, like properties right beside it, and I'm backed up to a four-lane highway, that highway service would be applicable, but as well as, uh, I know I'm, only looking for a vacation rental home, and I know there's other uses for it, pretty limited on the property that I'm looking at, but I apply for it also because of the property down the road that is vacation rental homes, that is highway service. And so when I apply for it, I assume that because of, I'm surrounded by other highway services, that it would be, uh, like property, I guess. So I don't know what the standard is that you guys use, if there is a standard, that says, you know, can it be there or can it not be? I'm not sure what the standard is, but, uh, I guess maybe that's one of my questions, I guess.
Do you see a problem with applying through the planned unit development and getting it approved that way?
You know, I would, I will try to pursue that route, but, uh, you know, I recently just sold my house, and I'm looking to, to build rather quickly, and it takes more and more time, and I, you know, I'm on the, you know, even after the last snow, it even extended me a little longer, uh, but, uh, I mean, if you guys deny me, yes, I will try to pursue that, but I would like to just have this approved in the sense that, uh, because there's like properties around it.
Dan, if, if we, um, if we deny this and have him go through the planned unit development, how long is it gonna take him to go through that whole process?
Well, a rezoning typically takes three months, but he'd have an answer within a month.
He couldn't start his construction until it gets rezoned, could he?
Depends on what he wants to construct. If he just wants to construct a residence, that's just a building permit. But once he starts construction of the additional cabins, then the rezoning has to be in place.
Well, Mr. Chairman. Yes. I, I voted against this at the Planning Commission, and, um, I guess my only response is, and I, and I think you had a valid point. Rental cabins across the road are highway service, right across the road from this is highway service. And I'd say is, one mistake does not mean I should make another one in doing highway service, so. Obviously couldn't agree with highway service. This is gonna be a tough, tough area to build on, I would think. And I think you get some septic problems and a whole bunch of things.
So how, how is it a mistake to make it highway service, I mean?
Well, I think it was a mistake to make the helipad highway service. No, I think it was a mistake to make the helipad Highway Service.
We have a member of the Planning Commission here. Barb, do you have anything you want to contribute? Thank you.
The PUD would still allow him to do the uses that he's requesting, and that's why they went that direction with Planning Commission.
The only difference is, we're going to delay this gentleman and his project for it sounds like several months, and, and we're only doing that because we want to limit what he's going to be able to do up there. Although, we're saying, if he's going to do what he says he's going to do, we'll allow it under the PUD.
Correct.
I don't think we're saying that at all. I'm not saying that.
I mean, that's what your office is saying, isn't it?
Well, the Highway Service would allow for a lot wider range of uses.
I understand, I understand that, but if he's going to go up there and build his residence and some vacation rental homes, and I guess that's what I'm hearing, you're saying, yeah, that would work under a PUD. Your office is saying that, right?
Yes.
Would it work under Highway Service?
Yes, it would. Vacation home rentals are an allowed use, outright allowed use, under Highway Service.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Wildman. Tell us what it is you're wanting to do up there on that property.
Well, I'm looking to build my own personal residence and then put sixty-eight rental cabins in there as well, vacation rental cabins, similarly to what's down the road on Silver Mountain Road and behind me on sixteen there.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Sixty-eight rental cabins on this nine acres along with the home?
Yes, whatever, whatever the, it will sustain, I guess, in the sense of septic and drain field. I am a septic and drain field installer, so I can kind of get a, get a handle on what it would sustain, and then through the Planning Department as well.
But you haven't done anything as far as digging profile holes or anything like that, or did he?
I have, I have one profile hole up there, and I did do just before, I just purchased the property a few months ago, and I did do a preliminary, just kind of a perk test on it to make sure that it would perk out, and it will, but I didn't hand those in because I wasn't exactly sure, you know, where I was going to place things. I just wanted to make sure that it would perk.
But I guess where I'm getting at is when we get, get around to putting ten units on this property, we're going to have to have ten septic tanks and ten drain fields on nine acres.
Well, probably one large one that would accommodate that number, yes.
Yes. They could do one large community drain field for all of the cabins. That would have to be approved by DNR because it is a commercial use and does have to be engineered.
But your office is recommending that prior to the approval of the rezon, comprehensive plan, they should do the tests.
Want to make sure that the property will allow for a drain field on the property and will allow for the proposed uses that will, could happen on the property.
But we got that, we can still regulate all that with the building permits, can't we?
Yes, we could.
How would you do that?
With the building permits?
Because he could put holding tanks, or he could do, you know, basically anything else.
Well, any commercial system is required to be approved by DNR.
Yeah.
Any commercial system. If it's a commercial use, it does have to go through them. If he can't get a septic system, he may not be able to do the use he wants to do on the property. If it doesn't perk, yeah, he could be limited, but he could still do holding tanks, which isn't as acceptable as a normal drain field.
If you can't get a septic system, then we've got a piece of property zoned Highway Service that now it's up for grabs.
We could build a convenience store there, then.
Could put a truck stop, if you can get the trucks up the hill.
First, you have to get them licensed with the federal government and the IRS, don't you?
Yeah, and then come through the county attorney to get it done.
Okay, anything further on this subject? Do we have a motion?
I want to make a motion to uphold the Planning and Zoning Commission, who we appoint to do this kind of stuff, their decision.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, I'm torn. Because on one hand, I think we ought to support the boards that we appoint to handle this stuff for us. On the other hand, I think we're jerking this guy around unnecessarily because ultimately we're going to allow him to do what he wants to do, so it just seems like government bureaucracy at its best.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I believe that the gentleman is worried about building his own house. He said he sold his, sold his place, so he needs to get started, and he can get started on that anytime without any further delay other than the septic system, and he shouldn't have to do that anyway. So, he can get started on his own house, and when he gets that done, then he can go for the rest of the nine cabins by applying for a planned unit development.
Correct.
And he can get that started right now, but still build the house.
Is that right? This piece of property was split off of agricultural piece on less than forty acres, so right now it's sitting as a non-compliant lot, so it can't, I can't get a building permit on a non-compliant lot, right?
If it's part of the overall acreage, we could issue one building permit for all of that acreage as it is. Once it is split, yes, that is true. You would need to get approval of this PUD prior to getting a building permit, even for his house, so I correct it. I stand corrected.
Okay. It is split. I did buy the property.
Oh, it is split?
It was an agricultural piece on a fifty-acre piece, and then I split it.
So, then, yes, he could not get a building permit until the property is rezoned. I stand corrected.
Rezoned to what?
To the PUD or Highway Service. Because right now it's...
He can get a condition, he can get a building permit to build a...
Right now, the lot, right now, the lot is split from the other parcels that was, it was originally a part of, which was larger than forty acres. But now it's been, he just recently purchased it, so he does need to have it approved through the rezoning process before we can issue a building permit.
Or vary the acreage size.
Yeah, through the PUD or the Highway Service would bring the lot into compliance.
See, as it sits right now, I...
Right now, he can, they can file a deed with registered deeds for less than what the ordinance allows, but once they try to get a building permit, they have to bring that property into compliance. So, yes, I, he is correct that we would not be able to issue a building permit until the property is either rezoned to the Highway Service, or even then, we couldn't do it because then he needs a commercial use on the property first. So, really, the issue is that he would need to get the property zoned to this planned unit development, which would allow for those uses on the property, including their house and the vacation home rentals.
And again, that's going to take about three months.
He'd have an answer within a month, but, yeah, he couldn't technically get a building permit until three months.
Yes.
Dan, was he made aware of this on his initial application that, for a Highway Service, that he should go to the planned unit development? And so, how long is, how long ago has that been?
I was not aware of the whole conversation that was happening between him and my staff. I would like to think that he was made aware of that, but I don't know if he was or not.
No, I just applied for Highway Service, and that's what I was handing the paperwork. You know, the lady was very, very helpful, but the other route was, you know, I can't remember exactly how it went wording-wise, but I know that it had to be zoned something before I could do anything.
Did you have a discussion with staff about what it is you were wanting to do, why you wanted to do this?
Yes, yep, and more than likely, it would have passed, I guess, in that thought process because of the surrounding Highway Service around it and that it's up against a four-lane highway.
I'm going to make a substitute motion that we grant this.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Want a roll call vote?
Yes.
How long do we have to vote?
About one-tenth of a second.
Uh, no.
Davis?
I'll refer.
Holloway?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
I'm afraid you'd say that. I don't like this business, the Highway Service along that, that route, and I didn't like it when we made that piece of property, that they were trying to put the helicopter pad there as Highway Service. I thought it was a mistake on that, and a piece across the street, been there for what, thirty years or better? So, that was something that we really didn't have any control of. How long ago did you sell your house?
It's closing this next month here, so about two weeks ago, I guess we got the, I guess you'd say, agreed on a price, I guess you'd say, and then...
And when's your closing?
The seventeenth of next month here.
Seventeenth?
Seventeenth of next month.
Of June?
Yep.
Okay. I don't like it, but I got to vote yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
We're done with the consent agenda, and now we move to regular items, item P.
Good morning. Item P is a Spring Creek Watershed Management and Project Implementation Plan, the approval of Advisory Group Recommendations for Cost Share Applications. At the previous Board of Commissioners meeting, Commissioner Buskerud had asked for more information regarding the applications on riparian. Actually, Justin Krasky is here with Respec to answer any questions regarding those riparian projects, so I'll refer.
And P, though, is that P or Q? I mean, isn't Q the approval of the participant agreements? P is the, that's what mine's, approval of the Advisory Group Recommendations for Cost Share Applications? I thought P would be the announces another cost share sign up with the application date of June third, or my way off base here.
Those were previously approved. The only one that was continued was number three, that recommendation.
That's what I thought, too.
Mm-hmm. That was continued on May seventh, so...
The others two were approved.
Correct.
Okay, so, where are we on this? Are you comfortable with...
Yeah, I am.
So, do you want me to actually read the recommendation from the advisor group, and then you can ask questions regarding those applications? So, the Pennington County Board of Commissioner approves two riparian applications, SPC two thousand twelve PC seventy-seven and SPC two thousand twelve PC ninety-four, and one onsite wastewater treatment application, SPC two thousand twelve PC seventy-eight, and allows the applications that are not funded to remain pending and to be considered with the next round of applications. So, I think the question at the May seventh meeting was actually the estimated amounts for those projects, what they actually entailed. So, do you want specific description, not specific, but some descriptions of the projects, what the costs are?
What I would like to know is what we're going to get for forty-two thousand dollars and how that's going to help.
Okay, well, I'll refer to Justin.
And if we could do these one at a time?
Just to clarify here, what we're doing, the question that Commissioner Buskerud has asked actually is a specific item in the next agenda item.
Well, that's what I thought, too. That's what I...
And so, the, I guess the explanation would be the same either place.
Correct. This agenda item is actually approving the recommendations to fund those from the advisory group. The next agenda item would actually be approving the agreements with the property owner. So, either way, I guess, if you approve the recommendations, I guess if you don't approve the agreements, it's either way, I mean, either. Depends on where you want to, if you want to hear about the projects in the recommendations section to approve those recommendations, or if you want to hear it.
But I guess if we're approving the recommendation, we're not approving the project. Is that what you're saying?
You're not approving the agreement, essentially. Yeah, you're just approving the recommendations for the projects. The actual agreements is with the landowners for the projects. I don't know how...
Seems a little crazy because if you're approving the recommendation, it seems like then you oppose the project.
I think the motion would be to approve the recommendation and have the chair's signature on the agreement. Only one shot. I mean, that would...
Probably how it should have been.
Well, let me do it. I don't care how we do it.
Okay, so, do you want to hear about the projects now? Okay.
Because if we don't approve the recommendation...
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Buskerud, I think specifically, these are two of the larger projects that we have had applied for through the project to do on, within the project area. Specifically, these are large riparian improvement projects. Riparian is just means along the stream. These are specifically along Spring Creek, and these are over five hundred foot in length and have a number of best management practices or conservation practices with that. Anytime that you improve the buffering capacity of a creek, you will reduce any type of bacterial runoff or deposition within the stream channel of that reach that you're improving. So, as we've monitored over the last three years within Spring Creek, we have found that where we do have good riparian or stream health, we don't have a whole lot of bacteria exceedances. So, this has always been an eligible practice within the project since its inception in two thousand nine, and we've done smaller projects that have helped in that regard, and we're currently monitoring those to see the effect on not only bacteria but sediment and nutrients. And then, we plan to monitor as part of these projects also with that, so...
Ken, do we know specifically what's going to be done? And then, secondly, is this going to be a bid process to, to obtain competitive bidding to have the work done?
Good question, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Holloway. I can't talk to the specifics because it is, some of the information regarding specific practices about the properties is confidential, but I can tell you that in talking with the state's attorneys, these are reimbursable agreements from Pennington County to the landowner or the participant. So, those participants act as their general contractor and are not subject to a bid process. However, we do encourage those folks to get as many bids as they can because ultimately, any cost over the approved cost list docket for the project, that comes out of their pocket. So, it really isn't coming on them, you know, the county limits its cost to this not to exceed. So, if they get a contractor that goes above and beyond that not, not to exceed cost share amount, that landowner is responsible.
So, you say the specifics of what is going to be done is confidential. Why would that be confidential?
Specifically, there's a conservation plan, schedule of operations... Specifically, there's a conservation plan schedule of operations that's an attachment to the contract agreement. That contract agreement will be approved by the Pennington County, or Pennington Conservation District and the Natural Resources Conservation Service as part of that. There's a section of the farm bill that does require anybody that is a cooperator with NRCS and the Conservation District to not disclose that specific information without the permission of the landowner. And neither one of these landowners, after being contacted, would grant that permission. We do have acknowledgement forms and permission forms for that. So I cannot discuss that in a public meeting setting.
So hypothetically, then, a person could get this cost sharing program to do some work along the creek. I could hire my brother-in-law to come out and do it and pay him five times more than what a general contractor would get, and as long as I don't ask for more than what was approved for the project, 'cause you still don't know what the hell I'm gonna do, you would pay the bill, or we would pay the bill, is that right?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Holloway, I know what they're gonna do specifically. The county will know what they're gonna do specifically. I can't discuss that in public amount, in a public forum. However, the county does have in-kind rates that they have to adhere to for not only their in-kind labor or any general contractor that they hire or subcontractor, but also the equipment. So not only do we have an approved docket that limits those unit costs for, say, a tree planting, we also have a limit for the amount of hourly labor that is charged to that also. That was a result of the state and the county's audit of this project last fall that we adopted those in-kind rates. Those in-kind rates are based upon a number of different federal and state projects within the state of South Dakota and also within Pennington County.
Justin, you, earlier, I think you used the term cost list?
Yes.
What is that?
That is a cost docket, unit cost priced, and the percent of cost share that the advisor group has recommended, and I think you guys approved it for the project, or the Board of Commissioners approved it for the project in June of two thousand twelve, June seventeenth or eighteenth. That cost list was approved, along with the ranking sheets and the application for this period of, of the project. That's on our website. We include that as part of the contract agreement. We also use that with the field visit material estimates or length estimates to come up with a not-to-exceed cost.
Do these costs are, what, broken down into construction activities, or...?
Very much so. Uh, per foot of stream bank protection is, I can't remember the exact amount, but the other one is per tree planted or per acre of riparian project done is, I think, seven thousand dollars. The county costs shares on a percentage of that unit cost, not to exceed that. So that's how we come up with that. Those cost lists are based upon the South Dakota Conservation Commission's cost list for the state of South Dakota, also the Natural Resource Conservation Service equip or Environmental Quality Incentives Program cost list. That's what we base it upon. And then we also use what we know to be the cost from previous projects on Spring Creek. So we've got some of those done also. So we, we take those actual receipts and roll that into the next year's cost list to try to come up with a good idea of what this, these projects are gonna cost.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do, do we have specifications for each of those cost items, like a creek bank?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
So do we specify exactly what has to happen?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Holloway, the process is, is I can't commit a full-blown engineering design and survey until the agreement is signed. This is all preliminary. We tried to come up with a preliminary estimate at this point. Once that agreement is signed, we go into a full design effort, survey is done, we apply, we help the landowner apply for all those permits, floodplain development, section four oh four permit, any other permits that may be required, building permits, and then they're given a actual engineering stamp design so that they can go do the project, and then that, that is certified by a professional engineer for the state of South Dakota. In addition to that, all of those, and this is where NRCS comes in, all of those specifications outside of the septic have to be approved by a professional engineer and also, as part of this project, are certified that they meet NRCS standards and specifications, engineering specifications. So they review this at the Pennington Conservation District and Natural Resource Conservation Service to say, these meet these standards. And because of that oversight, it does require some adherence to the farm bill as part of this project.
Is the engineering and design fees included in the forty-two thousand?
The engineering and design fees are included in our contract task of project management and engineering as part of this project.
So it's, it's whatever, whatever we're already giving you out of this?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Holloway, correct.
Is it up and above? I mean, is it on an hourly basis, or what?
You know, internally, we have hourly. This is a fixed-price contract, but we provide that level of detail when asked. I can tell you that it, we try to shoot for, you know, typically in engineering, you're looking at anywhere from twenty to thirty-five percent based upon the complexity of the project. I will say that this is Pennington County, and anytime that you work on a creek or a river, the obligation and the professional oversight that is needed is warranted. Everybody is well aware of what's happened, so we take that very seriously on this project.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Have the participants been given this cost share funding agreement so they know what's in it? 'Cause yesterday I heard that some of them don't even know that they had to pay money for this.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Buskerud, I, you know, our engineers work on it. I don't know specifically what the communication was between them, but as far as I'm aware, everybody that I've talked to, there is a match component of part of these projects. As part of that, it can be their in-kind or cash, depending upon which way they decide to go as a general contractor. Have we got into the specifics of this? No, not at this time, because we don't know what to actually offer them as part of the agreement.
I have a question for Jay. Would this be executive session, legal for us to go into executive session so we find out what it is that we're funding? Because apparently now the board doesn't know what we're funding. The specifics of it.
It was my understanding that it involves a contractual matter, that the county would be one of the contracting parties, and yes, I would say that would fit.
Anything further?
I'm sorry. Would you tell me again, what, is, is federal law that we have to keep all this stuff under wraps and not tell everybody?
I can give you my opinion, but your state's attorney have reviewed most of that also. From my standpoint, we're, you know, as an engineering firm, we're a cooperator and have signed agreements with NRCS. Anytime that they are involved within a project, there are certain things that are public and are not public as part of that process. I'm adhering to what our firm has assigned to that. They've, Patrick and Jay have reviewed the same information. There's also a state law regarding any cultural resources or state historical preservation information as part of these projects that I will not discuss in public meeting.
That you will not, or you can't?
I can't.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, one of my major things that I would like to see, and that's why I was in favor of the subject day ordinance, we have to protect the water, the drinking water of this country, this county, and that should be primary among what we're doing. I think this is leading toward that. On the other hand, now we're starting to pay for fencing to reduce wildlife damage and drip irrigation system to establish buffer plantings and control weeds, and I understand where, where grasses and even weeds help filter the runoff into the creek. But on this one project, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, but it, it is to the south, meaning upstream from Crooked Creek Campgrounds. Is that where this is? And I haven't been by and looked for a long time, but they were down in the creek, and Crooked Creek was doing, down the creek, doing work, and I'm afraid everything we're spending upstream from Crooked Creek Campground is probably worthless, but I could be wrong. I'm, I'm not a scientist, so I, I don't know.
Okay, to, to kind of clarify where we are, Justin, we started out with the focus on PC seventy-seven, but I'm inclined to think that some of what you've said would also apply to PC ninety-four.
Correct, Mr. Chairman.
And so in terms of discussion, the specifics related to those two items in and of themselves is interchangeable.
Correct, Mr. Chairman.
Anything further from the commission?
Well, Mr. Chair, if the only way that we can find out what it is, I mean, eventually somebody's gonna ask us to vote on this thing, and if the only way we're gonna find out what it is we're agreeing to pay for is to go into executive session, I'd move to go into executive session to find out what it is that we're doing.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I still have not had a good answer to why we're going into executive session, I guess, and I'm gonna have to probably vote against going into executive session to hear it.
This kind of looks to me like maybe it's like the healthcare plan. You're gonna have to sign it in order to find out what's in it so we can, we can, but that's how we're gonna have to find out, I guess, what's in this thing.
Well, and if it costs us nearly as much as that thing is gonna cost us, it's probably a bad idea.
Well, I, I tell you, for me, I'm not gonna vote for this if I don't know what it is that we're, we're gonna do on the property, so...
Is there further, Justin? Okay. We do have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Buskerud?
No.
Davis?
Yes.
Holloway?
Yes.
Peterson?
No.
Okay. The, you know, my, my impression is that the, the specifics of whether the riparian area is engineered to be rock-faced or other materials used or vegetative, there's all kinds of choices, and in that sense, to me, those are the specifics, and not whether one of the participants hired your brother-in-law to drive stakes and so on. Am I off track?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, you're correct. I mean, the, so what's in information as part of this contract and conservation schedule of operations is contained on this BMP cost list, and these are the cost share rates that are applied to one of those items. I can tell you that very common on riparian or stream bank protection projects is channel vegetation, that item, I don't have a pointer, but where it says practice standard three twenty-two, and it's six dollars a foot, and you're just planting maybe willow poles or potted willows or anything like that, shrubs? Okay, thank you. That you're, you're planting those along the stream bank after there's been some stabilization measures installed. So please go down to the next, down to stream bank protection. Typically, what we do on these types of projects, and we've done this on, on one already within the project area, is stream bank or shoreline protection, and, and I'll just call biotechnical or bioengineering as a combination of, of plants and both hard engineering practices such as riprap. We tended to call them toe rock now regarding rip, some of the riprap structures. This is the NRCS practice standard. This is the per foot price at twenty-five dollars. As you get into actual riprap, riprap or stream barbs or some type of armoring practice on these reaches of, of Spring Creek, we don't like to do that on all of them, but we certainly have to, to do that to stabilize some of that. That can be as high as a hundred and twenty-four dollars a foot because of the mobilization costs and specific rock requirements for the engineering and the permitting requirements. This is, because it is so expensive, this has been recommended by the advisory group and approved by the Board of Commissioners last summer at a fifty-fifty cost share, not to exceed that one twenty-four foot amount. A very common practice is also, go up, Brittany, this riparian forest buffer, and anytime that you have some type of grass, you're either mowing it or spraying it. Typically, if you can get trees and shrubs into that area, you can reduce some of the weed and pest, but infestations by shading, but you also increase the amount of, I guess, roughness or material that any type of runoff has to go through before it reaches the creek. So if you have livestock or wildlife or a failed septic, it has to go through a lot thicker buffer in order to get to the creek than, say, mowing right up to the edge and leaving one foot of grass strip there. So that is a very expensive one, because it really depends upon, at what age do you have the plantings installed, or do you purchase, you know, ball and burlap, or do you purchase bare root stock? Within the Black Hills, and with, specifically within the project, it's much more successful if you go the larger plantings because of the potential damage from wildlife. And that gets us to our next most common item as part of these riparian projects within the Spring Creek project, is go up to fencing. We do have a number of different fencing options. Typically, the floor wire is the preferred option up there to, or some type of panel to keep the wildlife off of these plantings. Otherwise, it would be a waste of money. And so that's also included at times with these projects. So overall, those are the kind of the core project, or core practices that are included within these types of projects. We also include weed control, because as anything, when you disturb ground from some type of construction activity, you will have weeds start to come back, and you want to get on top of those before it's, before it overwhelms some of the planting. So that's kind of an overall general information on that. The only thing different between projects is, for the most part, the amount that they're doing. And again, they're subject to this limit on the cost list, and if they're doing it by themselves or hiring a contractor, they're also limited to the in-kind rate. So we try to put those and recommend it to the advisory group and the commission to put those controls in place so that it does somewhat guarantee that this will be done in an efficient, cost-effective manner within the project. in an efficient, cost-effective manner within the project area.
If the Commission has no further questions, we'll invite public comment. But do you have anything further, Justin?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this project, Segment II, was announced last summer, initiated. Advisory Group made recommendations. Commissioners approved those recommendations. Landowners or participants have applied within the given timeframe. These projects have been ranked after appropriate site visits. They've been reviewed in much more detail at your advisory group meeting by the advisory group members. They've made recommendations to you, and now we do need some type of direction on which way you would like to go with these applications and agreements and perhaps the project.
Just to clarify, Brittany or Dan or whomever, do we need a motion for each P and Q? Separate motions?
Yes, to approve the recommendations from the advisory group and then to approve the actual chair signature on the participant agreements. So the first one would be to basically approve the advisory group recommendations.
Mr. Chairman.
Or actually recommendation, number three.
I would make a motion to approve the recommendation by the Citizens Advisory Group.
Is there a second?
Well, so we can talk about it, I'll second that.
We do have a motion and a second, and I assume that covers item P. Any comments or questions?
Want a public comment?
Not sure yet.
I think the public comment comes on the next item.
So we wanted to make a comment on that one item.
You want to make, you want to make a comment, ma'am, on the public recommendation? The people that volunteered their time and to make the recommendations to the County Commission on this item?
Yes.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the advisory group's recommendations. So I would expect your comments to be directed toward either supporting that or opposing it. So you come forward, please.
Can I ask you a question, sir? Because I'm new at this too. So.
Come up and identify yourself and ask your question.
Well, I want to make sure I'm at the right time. I'm Julie Mueller. So right now would be the time for us to talk about the fact that they want to continue this project?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
They, well, what I understand you're voting on is you want to continue going, moving forward with this project, and that's what you're asking for further comment on?
No. No, the motion we have is to accept or not accept, depending on whether the motion passes, the recommendations of the advisory group. And that has, does not specifically have anything to do with whether the project continues or not.
Okay, so if we have comments on what he had said, we wait till the next one? Okay, thank you.
Hello, Stephanie Strong. Thank you. I have a comment on this one, and I am in opposition to the recommendation. And it's the same reasons before, is because the study hasn't proved anything, and I wanted to bring to your attention, I listened to a group this morning, Governor out of Utah. He was giving a speech to Congress about who should be in charge of the lands, and what I hear here is that we have a lot of federal people in charge of our local lands. And I had brought it to your attention before that there is a way to do where, because Pennington County is very unique, all the counties are very unique what their issues are, and rather than having a federal standard that does a one-size-fits-all, then you're able to regulate and manage it yourself and how you want to and not have anything done in secret and get the job done that protects the landowners and protects the water and air and everything else. And it's just like, say if I had, say if I had a dollar, you know, and I was going to go buy you a present, you would, and you were known personally, you would get the best benefit out of the dollar. But say if I don't know you, and I'm, and then, and then you're some guy that is going to get a present, you don't get quality and it's more expensive because a federal dollar doesn't go far where a private.
Tom, you don't seem to understand that you're talking about the motion that we have before us. I don't mean to be confrontational, but there is an order that occurs in these meetings, and I am in charge of maintaining that order. And unless you have something specific to say either for or against the motion itself, either saying the advisory group doesn't know what they're doing, or you bet they're good people, they know the area, and so on, so.
Okay, the advisory.
Unless you have something to say like that.
The advisory group does not know what they're doing.
Okay.
And, and in order to prove that, let's, let's use, what do you mean? Could be, I mean, don't you have to have a reason?
You.
Because, I mean.
How do you know they don't know what they're doing?
Because you're going to give money to do this project over here for 1,000 feet, and then, like you said, it's like, what about the guy that's doing this down there? Then that's going to put, you know, you know, contaminate the creek. Then this guy isn't getting help, and whatever he's doing on his property, the best stewards of the property are the landowners. They should be responsible for, they do the best.
You're done.
Thank you.
And we will take no further comment on this issue at this point in time because to say that you can judge what a group did is not, is not accurate.
Where's the proof, Lindell?
What proof do you have?
I don't. That's my problem. Where is the proof from this study?
The study is not in question. It's the recommendations of the advisory group about these projects. So we're, you're done. We're going to take a vote.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item, item Q.
Item Q is for the participant agreements. They are needed in order for the projects to begin if the Board of Commissioners accepts and approves the advisory group recommendations. The requested motion is to approve the chairperson's signature on Spring Creek Watershed Management and Project Implementation Plan Cost Share Participant Agreements, SPC 2012 PC-77 for $42,897, SPC 2012 PC-78 for $3,500, and SPC 2012 PC-94 for $40,229.
Do we need further discussion on the specifics of these projects?
Mr. Chairman, if, if we don't agree with this, what happens, Justin? Can, can we recommend they go back and take another look at the project, or is it just the water?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Buskroot, I think that would be an option. I mean, I don't know from a professional standpoint how would we change that. You have certainly within your power to lower the cost to that not to exceed amount, and then we would go back and work with the landowner and so forth, or the participant. I just may add that everyone within the project area is eligible as long as they're a property owner within that, so.
I think what sometimes gets forgotten is, these are applicants.
These are volunteers.
We didn't go out and grab them and haul them down here. I guess my major problem is, it's a lot of money to spend on somebody's property. Man, oh man, I could do wonders with 40 grand on my property.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Buskroot, they have as much match time and money as probably what's in these contracts is not to, this, these are very, stream restoration projects, and once we, as I mentioned, get into engineering projects on creeks and rivers within Pennington County, it is not an easy process. The engineering oversight is very, is taken very seriously.
They get 30%, right?
On some issues, but on the large ticket item, which is stream protection, go down to that one, please, Brittany, it's 50%. That's probably two-thirds of the project cost of finding the appropriate size rock, and I might add, from a permitting standpoint, we do have to have the right color of rock as we've indicated on tours. That is part of the permit requirements within the Black Hills. Your county highway department deals with that on a weekly basis. So these are not, these are not cheap projects to do. These are large, and they will have an impact within Spring Creek.
Mr. Chair.
Justin, you mentioned the color of rock, and let's clarify that, is that mandated by the federal mandate to this project?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davis, from my understanding, it's, it's through the permit process for the state of South Dakota, for some of the permit review provided that. We cannot use certain colors of rock within the hills. I can get your specifics on that, or Heine can provide that.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
There's one other thing that I'd like to bring up before there's any vote taken on this, and the fact is, is that if we vote to continue this or vote to send it back to the citizen group, the last thing in this world I want is some people that's volunteering, volunteering their time to do what they think is best for this community and this area and to wind up getting beat into submission by somebody. And if that happens, I'm not going to be at all happy about it.
Who's getting beat into submission on something, I guess?
Well, if it goes back to the citizen group.
Well, you know, I'm not going to try to beat anybody up, and I'm going to have a hard.
No, no, I'm not talking about you.
I'm going to have a hard time supporting something that I don't know what it is we're getting, and that's the thing that bothers me with this.
I agree.
It may be a great project, but I'll tell you what, if any of our department heads were up here asking for us to approve $40-some thousand on a project, and they say, well, trust me, it'll be nice, you'll like it, we wouldn't approve it.
Commissioner Holloway, it may, may kind of give you a little insight if you came from Canyon Lake down through Rapid City and you saw the rocks in different places along the creek that weren't there by, put there by nature. That's the type of thing that is done to streams to influence what's in the stream.
Well, and I understand that, but it just seems to me like we ought to know what it is we're buying before we approve the project. And if somebody would come in and say, here's, here's the plan on what we're going to do, but just to say, we're going to put some riprap in there, and we're going to put a sprinkler system in, and we're going to plant some trees, we don't know what trees they're putting in? I mean, we just wouldn't approve this for any department head that came forward with a project like this if we didn't know what it was we're doing. And so, it might be a great deal, and I'm all for clean water and, and a nice environment, but I just have a hard time approving something when we don't know what it is we're approving. Trust me, it'll be right.
Anything further? Yes, you may.
Thank you. Again, I'm Julie Mueller, and I, I did have a conversation with one of the applicants on Sunday. I have a list of questions, and some of them you did ask, so I just kind of wanted to throw these out there for the record. And my first question was, and I think it's been talked about, is there an engineering estimate for the work to be done on these properties? Do these projects go out for public bid before they are awarded, as do other government projects with these dollar amounts? I know in, in almost every form of government, after a certain limit, everything has to go out for bid when you're talking tax dollars. The Dale Ludens, who I talked to on Sunday, he had no clue that there was a $40,229 price tag. No clue. He said he had, that all these applicants had received these things in the mail telling about this program. He went out and filled it out and sent it in, and he's had two calls back, and that's it, saying that this is the kind of project they're looking for, and he's probably going to be approved. And if he didn't know that it was $40,000, what is the cost share amount? Is it 2080, 3070? How do you know these people have the financial means to take care of their percentage? So if this is $40,000, you're talking, he's going to have to pay eight. And if he doesn't have the fin, or I'm just, I'm not saying that he does or doesn't, I'm just talking about the applicant themselves. If they don't have the means to come up with their portion of this, who covers that? And do the recipients of our tax dollars have to claim the amount they are receiving to enhance their property to the IRS as gift or income? A lot of the applicants asked for wastewater, in the future ones, they asked for wastewater treatment or septic systems, and why is it the taxpayer's responsibility to provide with these systems? When each of you ran for your, wait, ran for your position, did you promise citizens you would watch out for waste, fraud, and abuse of our money? I wanted you to know, when I went to Mr. Luden's property, there's extremely long grass that, for, I mean, hundreds of feet before it even gets to Spring Creek, and that oxbow has been in that creek for hundreds of years, probably. That long grass already is a buffer to whatever's going to go into the creek. So planting more trees or putting rocks on isn't going to help because that long grass already is there and doing its job. Let's see, and I did ask the last time if all of you had been out to see the property, and I know that you two had, and I appreciate that. I didn't know if Mr. Buskroot, Holloway, or Nancy Troutman had had the opportunity to look at it before they made their decision. And also, it's my understanding that this is an EPA 319 fund, which is to be for immersion recreation, which is swimming, and if you've been to both of those locations, you can see you could not swim in either of those locations at all, so I.
I can in Sheridan Lake.
Right, but we're not talking about Sheridan Lake right now.
And Mitchell.
Okay, and then, also, as you guys talked about the healthcare law, there should be nothing confidential from the taxpayer when our taxpayer funds are being used. And then, one more thing about the rocks, riprap is $200 to $300 a load to take and put somewhere, and like Mr. Holloway said, you could hire somebody to do any of these things. The price tags are absolutely astronomical. You can transplant trees from the hills for, I believe, a $5 permit. And if you look at the property that received $19,800 of our tax dollars a couple years ago across from the visitor station, those rocks are absolutely enormous. That would not be the kind of rock I would think that we taxpayers should have to put in for anyone. So I just, I just wanted to put that out, and our children, grandchildren, and future generations, should they be burdened with so much debt that you can tell them that you voted for, for this kind of a project? And citizens have been crying out to our elected officials to stop the wasteful spending, and we all need you to hear that. I ask you to be leaders here in South Dakota and expose this kind of spending to the media. We, let's ask Washington DC to stop these kinds of programs. Thank you.
Anything further?
Oh, I did want, I did want to mention, I did have Mr. Lowry and Mr. Luden's applications and stream bank stabilization and erosion control, just those two items, and that's the one that had $42,897 on it, and I was in front of his property again on Saturday. And I was in front of his property again on Sunday. That property looks beautiful. The sides look beautiful. There's hardly any water in it. I mean, there, there doesn't look like a single problem at all. So, I don't know how you could justify forty-three thousand dollars almost to him. And Mr. Luden's the same thing. He did talk about how we needed help with spreading, or spraying noxious weeds on the other side of the creek, which is also his property, because he couldn't reach it. And again, as you've seen in some of these applications, spraying of weeds is not part of this, and if you can't reach them, you need to hire somebody to do it. But he was very nice, he was very upset about all this, because he had received calls, and, and I don't think that there, from what I understood from him, there has been a lot of communication on what's going on. So, again, I, I need to know what the cost share is, and whether or not that amount that those people are going to be expected to pay, you know, if they're going to be able to afford it, and if they can't afford it, who has to pick up the bill?
Do you represent them?
Who?
You're expressing a lot of detail about them, and they're not present.
Oh, Mr. Luden's? We had a conversation on the phone on Sunday, and he told me these things. He didn't know that there was a forty thousand two hundred and twenty-nine, according to him, on Sunday. He had no clue that that was the kind of dollar amount they were looking at. He called me on Sunday, and we had a long conversation, so.
The applications that you held up, are they?
I got copies of them. I got copies of, you can get copies of any of these things, so I, I have more copies for applications that are pending as well.
So, what are you going to do with them?
I'm just going to hang on to them.
I see.
So, thank you. This is public tax dollars.
I understand.
And, and this is an issue, and, and it concerns me, and it concerns me for our future. Thank you.
Anything further?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to ask her, on those applications that you have copies of, does it have an amount on the bottom of those?
No, it doesn't. It has the amounts, it has the amounts on this spreadsheet right here.
And was that given to the applicants?
I don't know if this was given to the applicants. I just got a copy of it, and it says, there, it says a riparian application number, the points, the name of the person, and the estimated 319 amount, which is the, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Are the applicants here?
I don't know the applicants. I just, they, Dale just called me, and we had a, we had a nice chat, kind of lively, but.
He and I had a nice chat yesterday, too.
Okay.
So did.
I'm the only one that hadn't talked to him. I have to call him.
Anyway, any further comments?
My name's Bruce Meister, and, oh, I had some comments, and, and, you know, I've got a couple comments left anyway, but I don't know, this project kind of sounds like job security at taxpayer expense to me. I don't know, that's, that's my thought on that, but I did, my wife and I went up and took a look at what, what is, you know, around the creek up there and stuff, and, and, golly, it looked really nice. It's, it's been, it's been that way. I mean, we didn't see livestock, we saw grasses and, and trees around that, you know, down along the creek, you know, the rocks, you know, the trees got places they'll grow, places they won't grow, and where they do, where they will grow, they're growing. The, the grass and, and the sandy pebbles and stuff along the creek act as a natural filter, and, and, and I think that nature does a really, really good job of what it's supposed to be doing. Better, I would say better than me, or better than any other engineer, I think. I don't think we can improve on nature, to tell you the truth. And, you know, we didn't, didn't see livestock or anything around there. We did see that, like I say, the grasses and the, and the stream making its curves, you know, like this here and that. That stream's been going there the way it goes ever since it was formed. I mean, that's, that's a long time ago, and we've been doing just fine ever since. So, I, I just don't understand spending the money on trying to improve that, you know, and, and something else I wanted to add is, you know, the entire country's in debt, and I don't want to go further in debt. That's, I think that the reason that we're in debt is because our elected officials spending beyond our means, and, meaning, you know, our elected officials think that that, the money that the government has is, is not ending, and, and without any consideration to the taxpayers, and I can't afford to waste any money. So, I'm, well, I'm, I'm against spending more money on this project, or, or similar projects even. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. All, all I can say is, you know, what everybody says about this is absolutely correct, and I'm going to guarantee you, when we run out of water in a few years, the debt in this country is going to seem like a pittance to running out of water. And I don't, can't say that this project is guaranteeing we're going to have water. I don't know, but I think we need to do what we can do to make sure we do.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I guess where I'm at on this thing is that, sure, and I've been up there, and I see the nice, beautiful, long grasses between the highway and the, and the creek on both sides, and yes, that, that grass does a fantastic job of filtering the water that's coming into that creek at this time. The riparian deal, as I see it, is the fact that, once in a while, we have a flood, and we had a flood in nineteen seventy-two, and you see what happened then. So, it did a tremendous amount of damage to the land, and to the public, and to the, to life and limb, and, and in this county. And my guess is, is that you're trying to do the riparian work on there to keep the flood from washing more solids into the creek and that thing. Whether the forty thousand, forty-two thousand is the right figure, I, I'm not here to tell you that it is or isn't, but I'm telling you that it, it's, it's a way to solve a problem with polluting the stream, polluting into the, and Mr. Farby, I, I hope I'm not boring you to death with my statement, but it looks like you're about to fall asleep, so I just wanted to wake you up. But frankly, this is what it's all about. Long, green grass is not going to handle the subject if we have a flood, and that's where I'm at it. It's going to wash the creek banks out, and that's what it's doing. If you look over on the creek banks, you'll see that that's happened in the past. If you go down and look at Mitchell Lake, you'll see that it's plumb full of sediment that's come down that creek and, and settled, settled down into the, into Mitchell Lake. What we do about that, I'm not exactly sure. One other thing that I will mention is that this, this project did help the city of Hill City quite some with their wastewater problems, and the pollution problems that's in the creek coming through, through Hill City. What we do with it, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think that, I think that something needs to be done, whether the eighty thousand dollars in these two projects is right up, I can't tell you that.
Anything further?
Well, I have a comment or two. I wasn't going to, a talker. I'm George Farby, and I wasn't going to comment about the two issues that Commissioner Davis brought up, but since he did, I'll, I'd like to retort. A thousand feet maybe on the creek, and there's probably a hundred miles of stream bank, and I don't know that that thousand feet and those two projects is any more representative than any other properties on that hundred miles of creek bank. So, we fix a thousand feet, and we've got a hundred times five thousand two hundred and eighty, and that's somewhere around five hundred thousand feet. So, we, so we fixed just this little bit of a problem, if it is a problem, and that's a big if. What about the other ninety-nine point nine percent of the stream bank on Spring Creek and all its tributaries? I think everyone in here will understand that there's probably about a hundred feet, a hundred miles of Spring Creek and its tributaries, and that's not counting the dry, the dry And as far as Hill City's concerned, Hill City put their plan in operation before this project was ever funded. In the spring of two thousand eight, Hill City came online with the state-of-the-art treatment system. Prior to that, for about thirty, thirty-five years, Hill City had three lagoons. Those lagoons didn't work like they do where I grew up, or where you grew up, or out there where you live. There's no bottom in them. So, Hill City was literally going potty in Spring Creek, which does go to Sheridan Lake. That brings me to the Sheridan Lake comment that Mr. Buschrude raised. If, if there was any bacteria, and that's a big, big if, I looked at all those properties, I saw no animals. I didn't even see pigs, by the way. Real imaginary, I didn't see any pigs. Didn't see any sign of any animals. Nighttime, maybe a deer or two might come in. By the time a deer, a deer turd got to Sheridan Lake, it would have well, well been taken care of by nature. Bottom line, folks, what are we doing handing out eighty-three thousand dollars to meet the goal? The goal of this project is to reduce the fecal coliform bacteria in Spring Creek. That's the objective, the stated objective, not mine, that's the stated objective. What will either one of these two projects do to, to meet that goal? I don't see any. Now, that doesn't mean that I know everything, obviously, but I think bacteria has to come from a warm-blooded animal, and, and I would include fish, I guess. And I saw no sign of any source. Eighty-three thousand bucks is a lot of money. And I, you may not permit me to do this, but I do have a copy of the page of the confidentiality agreement, section sixteen nineteen of the USDA Farm Bill, and this talks about egg producers and agricultural landowners. I don't think the Dale Ludens or Robert Lowry are egg producers. It's, this is the page out of the Farm Bill, sixteen nineteen. It's really a stretch, really a stretch to hide behind confidentiality. If, if this project were so wonderful, you'd think that the consultant would want this advertised all over the place, we'd want everybody involved, certainly not kept it in secret. Ron, I'm sure that you would want to, I'll make you a copy of this, and, and you can read it, but this says egg producers, and it says, "will not be disclosed by the USDA or its employees." Now, I don't think that NRCS, and here's where Lindell may correct me, I don't think NRCS has to be part of this. And while I'm thinking of that, Commissioner Davis mentioned these volunteers. Two-thirds of the advisory group are not volunteers, they are government employees. Two-thirds of them, Forest Service, NRCS, Game Fish and Parks, DNR, and on and on and on. There's, there used to be three private landowners, now there's four, but the bulk of the advisory group are not volunteers. Fact. They're local, state, or federal employees. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion to approve Cost Sharing Funding Project Participant Agreement, SPC 2012 PC 78, in the amount of thirty-five hundred dollars. That's one of the, one of the agreements. And that's for, I think, aid for septic system, isn't it?
Hey, do we have a second? I'll second it. We have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Just, just a clarification, that is for the septic system.
Yes.
That's what I.
That's what I got out of it. And Brittany, you shaking your head, yes?
Is that correct, Brittany?
Yes.
Sorry. Okay, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I do have a statement about this, but I, I asked when this project first got started, that I first came on board in one of the citizens' group meetings that we had, and said something to the effect of, the amount of money that justifies and how much, if people had the money to take care of the problem themselves, were they, and then I guess the answer I got was something to this, that, that the federal government doesn't allow us to ask if they can take care of it themselves, if they apply for this, everybody's eligible equally. Pretty much how it was. Okay, so, again, if, if we don't like what the, the other two projects are, that's fine, and I'm not saying whether we should do it or we shouldn't do it, but, again, can the folks that are having the thirty-five hundred dollar deal take care of their problem as well as anybody else? Guess that's where I'm at.
Did you have some comments?
Can you still do a few public comments, or is it just specific?
Come up and, and identify yourself.
My name is Florence Thompson, and I guess I, my question is about the process as a whole. How much is the county committed into this on a continuing basis, and can you stop at any time, and who would make those decisions, and what would be involved in that?
Okay, we're going to make note of your questions, and at a later point, after we deal with this motion, we can address that. And, and we may have to call on you to repeat it during the public comment period, so that we get it all. Anything further on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I voted aye. Motion carried. Okay, anything further on item Q?
We have to do something on it, don't we? Ah, here goes. SPC 2012 PC 94 and SPC 2012 PC 77. I'm going to make a motion to send those back for relooking, to see if we can't reduce the costs on those somehow. And since I'm not a soil scientist, or.
Is that part of your motion? Whoops.
I've never claimed to be one, but, okay, never mind, that's.
Let's see if we get a second before, before we go into your pedigree.
I'll second it.
Now, I, I, and I don't know how you're going to do that, but I guess the amount of money and for what it's being spent for, I, can I go along with, and I have to agree with Commissioner Holloway, that without knowing what the heck it is, I just, I haven't seen anything yet that should be private. Whether you put rocks on your property or grass, I can't see that that should be public information. I, and, and I, George is going to show me the law, and I'm not sure what law school he went to, but I suspect it's probably taken from, from the code.
Lindell, really quick, this thing, what this thing says, example of documents that aren't to be released to egg.
Let's hold this for public comment period, yeah.
Well, he started it.
Public comment period.
Mr. Chair, I call the questions.
Okay. Question's been called for, all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, we have the motion itself, and the motion is to.
I, I guess my motion was to send it back to, to respect for the, relooking and see if they can't somehow come up with a cheaper price than what they've got.
Or justify the means.
Or justify the cost, and say they can't do it.
Under the circumstances, the question has been called, and that passed, and so no comment can be accepted, other than to clarify the motion.
And if he wants to say, "I can't do it," I can.
No, okay, we got a vote. All in favor of the motion to send this back, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay.
I want them to send it back to get it lower. I want to know what the hell it is they're going to do.
That concludes the agenda for that, and now we come to items from, from the chair. And I just thought, given our discussion, I would take the liberty of pointing out an article that appeared in the Tri-State Livestock News on the eighteenth. article that appeared in the Tri-State Livestock News on the eighteenth, in the May eighteenth issue. And it relates to the Clean Water Act and the Water Resources Development Act that's in Congress, and the attempt to amend that with Amendment eight sixty-eight. That motion to amend failed. And I'll just quote part of this, "Unfortunately, the Senate failed to pass an important piece of legislation introduced by Senator John Barrasso, Representative Republican of Wyoming, which would have stopped an overreaching jurisdictional guidance by the EPA and the Corps of Engineers, which attempts to federalize all waters. The guidance is at the Office of Management and Budget, and could come out in final form any day. It is a tragedy that those who voted against this amendment refuse to recognize the devastating effect this guidance will have on farmers and ranchers across the country. If finalized, it would be the biggest federal land grab in history, requiring cattlemen to apply for permits to conduct everyday activities such as cleaning out a ditch." And it goes on. And the Supreme Court has asked Congress many times to clarify the jurisdiction. But at this point in time, it says crafting, "The administration has taken great liberty in crafting guidance that through ambiguous and ill-defined terms allows EPA to claim that any water body is a water of the U.S. And so if you're frustrated by what we're talking about here today, just wait." And us poking around on some of these details, depending on, on your point of view, you could say, "Well, at least we're doing something now, and maybe if we keep doing it, we'll keep the federal people from coming in and doing it anyway." Interesting to me, I've watched a lot of exercises and passionate pursuits of causes, and other than making the person feel good about it, maybe that's about all it does. Anyway, that's my speech. We've had committee reports, now it's time for items from the public, so...
We already, already asked for that, Mr. Chair, nobody got up.
That's right. So, and we've had executive session, so there's one other motion to make.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, we did.
She didn't, she was waiting for it till after the comments.
We had items, we asked for items from the public quite some time ago.
Asked several times.
That was two, we both stood up. You said you were going to get back to...
We asked for it, you didn't respond.
We waited for it. Oh, is it okay?
Well, how about if we adjourn, and you just go ahead and visit?
No.
No? You want to be on the tape, is that the idea?
I wanted to. Well, there's three people that want to, we have a legislator that drove all...
Let them speak, God. I'll tell you what, folks, I don't know what the hell that thing's around here to try to get the county commission to do a good job on something, and we're trying to do it, and all we're doing is getting beat up, and frankly, I'm just about had enough. Now, if, we asked for items from the public back when we took the recess at ten o'clock, and nobody got up. Nobody even said that they wanted to talk. They sat right there and looked at us.
You just asked for it.
So what do you want to do?
And then you sit up.
Did we vote on the motion to adjourn?
No.
Okay, we haven't voted on that yet. A motion to adjourn does take precedent over any other motion. So, the question is, if it passes, we're done. If it doesn't pass, you folks can have your say. That's the way it works. So, all in favor of the motion to adjourn, say aye. Motion didn't pass, so take your turn.
It's obviously the first time that you've been here. You haven't been here for the last year and a half to watch this commission get the hell beat out of them.
State your name.
Elizabeth May. I'm from Kyle, District Representative for Twenty-seven. It's an honor to be here. Mr. Peterson probably doesn't remember me, but...
Yes, I do.
Oh, do you? Uh, he was my first horse show, four-H horse show judge at the Facestock Show forty-four years ago. So...
Are you dating him?
Well, no, I just...
Not, I mean, by, by years, I mean.
Yeah.
Draw your stand.
Probably.
Um, yeah, I didn't come here for confrontation by any means. I'm just here as a representative, part of Pennington County, is in my district. My first year down in Pierre, what a, what a ride that was. Frustration, to say the least. And I've had so many people ask me, since I've been down there for a year now, you know, "What can we do to help, you know, the citizens of South Dakota and all these problems facing us?" And I don't have any answers. I definitely can't bring any from the state, because there are no answers at the state, folks. It all has to come from our local boards, which is you guys. And not just you guys, we've got school boards, I've got, what, five counties? I've been going around trying to visit with school boards and county commissioners, and I have three counties that absolutely are going to be declaring bankruptcy in, I would say, less than two years. State can't give me any answers. What's going to happen? Who's going to pay the bills? And, um, so, I just want to voice my concern every time, apparently you have a big issue here with Spring Creek. The importance of your guys' job. I, I, I just, I think that people sat on these boards, you know, I used to be on some boards and think, "Oh, jeez, you know, what am I doing this for?" But I can't emphasize the importance of what you guys are doing, because it's going to have, it's going to have to be you guys that stops this. Mr. Peterson is reading the deal out of the Tri-State, and I read the same one. It's not going to stop the state, and it's not going to stop the feds. It's going to have to stop here. This is where, and it's hard, I know it's hard. I was downstate, and they said, "What, why did you vote against that?" Well, you know, I'm just, I guess I'm willing to drive on a dirt trail versus a four-lane highway if I've got to take the dirty money. And folks, that's what it is. There's no getting around it. And as good as some of these things, these feel-good projects, I love them, I, you know, I want to be part of them, I want to volunteer, um, but I live on the reservation. And I can tell you what large government does to people. It's not pretty. And we are being sucked in. I don't, I don't care if you think it's a conspiracy theory, or you think it's a radical thought, it is not. And it takes real leaders and real backbone, and, which, why, I don't know why I'm down there, but I get, it really, the strength that it takes to fight back on that. I mean, I listened to some of the words today in the testimony, conservation plan, natural conversation, NRCS, project management, um, those are all key words that you all need to be privy to, because they mean something. They, they, you can't just, you can't ignore this stuff. I mean, are we really concerned that we're going to run out of water? Is that our concern?
Clean water.
Clean water. For over a hundred years, we've been, has people died from dirty water? I mean, it...
Yeah, there's a place right up here at Nemo, where the United States Forest Service dumped a whole raft of pollutant chemicals into their dump and covered them up and...
My point exactly.
And contaminated the water all the way down the creek from Nemo.
All I'm asking from you guys, as a state representative, have backbone. Do not fal, falter to the central government. We are sovereign here. We can make our decisions. Yeah, are we going to go without a few things? Yes, we are. Is it all right? Yes, it's all right. It's not going to be the end of the world. I look at Mr. Peterson, and I see a man that, there's very few people in my life that I ever, you know, at my age, you start forgetting all the people that have influenced you. That man took an eight-year-old girl that went to her first horse show, taught her personal responsibility, and hard work pays off. That's all I'm asking. For us to be, if we're a conservative state, let's act conservative, let's work together. You know, we were warned by Dwight Eisenhower about this in sixty-one, that we better be privy to all this, because it was coming. He saw it back then, and he warned the people. And so, I tell people, "I'm a terrible politician. I'm really bad. But I am a good representative, and there's only one thing that I concentrate on, and that's the truth." And I thank you very much, Mr. Holloway, for addressing the fact, or maybe it was Mr. Bursegood. What possibly, what possibly in this that you are looking at could be confidential? Really? I mean, we're not talking about somebody's health, or, we, we can't go down that path, guys, we just can't. And I've talked to, I'm blue in the state, downstate, and I'm just telling you, nothing's going to happen down there. It's going to have to happen back at home. So, I appreciate your time, I appreciate seeing Mr. Peterson, and I know your guys' job is hard. I hate my job, and I'm sure yours is worse. So, um, anyway, thank you for letting me...
Ma'am.
And good luck with Spring Creek.
The only thing that I've got to say is what makes me hate this job right here, is the continuing beat-up alongside of the head with a stick by people that are protesting anything that you want to do, but they have no answers to the problem that you're trying to solve.
And I can feel for you.
So now you know where I'm at.
You know where I'm at?
Very much, yep.
Yeah, I can feel for you. But as representatives, I might have to add, when your citizens are in front of you, that is the most important time, because that's who you're representing. And, you know, we can't always agree on everything. I always tell my husband, "Jeez, can you imagine how boring this world would be if we always agreed on everything?" You know, so we're not going to agree on everything. But what we have to agree on is we have to protect not only our state, but this country. I'm sure you will all agree, seventeen trillion dollars' worth of debt is our problem. And we can't add to it just because it's a federal program, and it's not coming from our tax dollars. It is most certainly coming from our tax dollars, one way or the other. So, we don't want to lie to ourselves that it isn't us. It's not our money. It most certainly is our money. And at this point, every one of us in this country owes fifty thousand dollars. I, I mean, it, the buck has to stop, but it's not going to stop at the state level or the federal level, it's got to stop with our local boards. And that's why I've been going around to my counties, talking. I mean, you're really going to have to really be strong about some of this stuff, because it's coming, and it's coming in a hurry. It's going to be a landslide. It's just been creeping on us, but it's getting ready to come. So, you know, if you get criticized by your constituents, you know, I, I told my people, you know, "I run for the job, so I guess that's part of the job," you know? It's, and I, I've had people not very happy with me. I mean, I'm in a Democratic district, and I'm a renegade Republican, so, you know? Yeah. So, but thank you for your time, and I appreciate everything you guys are doing.
Mr. Chair, I just want to clarify something, which you meant that when you ran for the job, you should be willing to take the beating. Yes, we have a flogging post out here that we probably man every, every, three o'clock every afternoon. But the thing I have problems with is people that are raising a fuss about certain items that have no clue about how to solve the problem we're trying to solve. All they want to do is raise fuss.
Well, and...
So if they'd come up with some answers to all of this stuff, we wouldn't be fighting each other.
Right. And, and I can understand that. It's the money. And, you know, you can blame it on media, or you can blame it on, you know, politics in general, but there is a true desire, I think, from people out there, wanting their public officials to be transparent and speak the truth. I always tell people, "The truth has no agenda. It has no agenda." Is the truth some hard, times hard to say? It is. I'll be the first to admit that. But if we can't be honest with one another, whether we're an elected official or a citizen, and I don't appreciate bad behavior, it's not warranted at the state level or anywhere else, but I think it comes out of a frustration, you know, because people want this to stop. And so, I think sometimes emotions get involved, and, you know, I would hope that people could be more professional about it, I guess, but I think it's just the frustrations. And so when you, you know, I saw the confrontation, and, you know, they don't look at the numbers and see all of that, and, you know, they're just, they're saying that we're going to give, whatever it was, forty-two thousand dollars to improve an area on a creek bed that, how long's that creek been there? I mean, I just think that we over-exaggerate things, and when you guys look at these things, once we open the spigot, and the spigot is the central government, and once you open that spigot, it's really hard to turn it off. And so, it's a decision that the citizens and the elected officials are going to have to make. If they want the spigot on, leave it on.
Fifty-seven percent of the people in this country want it on. You're preaching to the choir here.
I know, but your decisions, your decisions that you make as a commission here, as a board, I don't care if fifty percent want it. You've got citizens in your audience that, that are taxpayers, that don't want it, and they want you to stand up and say, "No, we're not doing it."
Some do.
Some do.
Some don't.
The majority of the people out there, I had a state representative tell me, "Representative May, don't, don't worry about your vote. You don't have to worry about it, there's such a small percentage of people that care how you vote. Is that really how we want to govern?" Those are, those are serious things. Just because you have just a handful of people sitting in here, doesn't mean that that's how we should govern. I don't know. Anyway, thank you. I appreciate it. Good luck.
Thank you. I really don't like the lecture.
Janet, Janet just first.
The question that I had asked before, which was kind of out of order, I guess, was, how far are we committed into the project? I understand there are more creeks to be done. Is, is the, is Paineen County obligated to go on with this, or can it be stopped at any time? What would be, who would be the decision-maker there? Would there be penalties involved for stopping it?
Justin, can you respond?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I think the current agreement with the South Dakota Department of Environmental Natural Resources goes to, if I'm correct, June of two thousand fourteen. That would be the end of segment two. I'm not aware of any penalties, and certainly, this commission has considered some of those questions before, I think, either last year or the year before. questions before, I think, either last year or the year before.
Did that answer your question? Yep. Okay.
Ron, I would sure invite, you would come up, I'll buy you a cup of coffee, I won't buy you a beer, because I don't drink beer in town anymore. And when it goes to .05, a lot more people would drink beer in town. And I was hoping that Don would be around, invite him. I can't let my commissioner's comment go without a, without a comment. Presumptive in his comment about those of us criticizing government is the notion that government has the answers, and that my government doesn't have the answers. Our answers are leave us alone and stay out of our pockets. Limited government, limited government. Government doesn't have the answers. Government can't do anything right. The military, kinda, only kinda. And that brings me to mine. Have you folks been reading about the Minutnot missile problem? There's been two articles in the last couple of weeks about the Minutnot missiles. I was one of those missiles for five years, and thank you, I want you folks to thank me for being a missileer that didn't take no, or mediocrity for an answer. I was an evaluator most of my five years, the head evaluator, and I never accepted the answer of, are we good enough? Was always looking, can we be better? Can we better take care of the crew force? These kids, 22, 23, 24-year-olds, today, just like in my time, they were this, I was an old guy at 30 years old, of age. We entrusted these kids in Minutnot with 450 nuclear weapons, three bombs per missile. What's going on up there, I don't know, but it's got the chief of staff of the Air Force, the secretary of the Air Force concerned. So, Mr. Peterson, when you said the other, last meeting, that I was never satisfied with the answer, during my Air Force career, I wasn't. Can we be better? So that people, so that we can live our lives the way the hell we want to live them. Government doesn't have the answer to how we should live our lives. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to say something to that effect, and I think that, I think that the word was, is that I maybe thought that government had the answers. I don't think government has the answers at all. But when somebody stands up and tells me, you're wrong, 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 you need to come up with an answer why we're wrong. And so, I haven't seen a lot of that, but I'm still willing to, still willing to learn. And I think this board today proved that they're willing to learn by saying, we're not going to pass these $83,000 worth of, of work up in the Spring Creek. Now, I don't have all the answers, but I'm tired of getting beat up with, you're wrong, you're wrong, you're wrong, you're wrong. And I equate it to my neighbor having a real nice pit bull that just plays with everybody in the world, but every time my neighbor leaves home, the neighbor on the other side of the fence jabs his pit bull with a stick. Pretty soon, that pit bull is going to jump the fence and bite you. And so, that's kind of where I'm coming from. It's just, it's just time to come up with answers together, not just to continue as you're wrong. And I guess that was proved in court here a while back. Thank you.
Hi, Stephanie Strong. Yes, you need the answers, and that guy, and the governor in Utah has answers. And I have given you guys these books before. And you can have this one. Again, and if, if you would look at it, and if you would work with those people, because it gives the... Utah is 95% federally-owned land, and what they have going on there is they have so many natural resources, they're 2% poverty level. They're working there because they're working together, and their local people are in, getting control of their, of their lands. Ken Ivory's been working very hard at that. These people have some answers, and I've asked you guys to look at that stuff before, and I can send you the link of the hearing that went today, and it is about you guys doing the local control rather than with the federal government. So, the solution is to do it locally, and these people have the plan. Comes from the Stock growers Association, and they were going around promoting that. So, all I am asking you to do is look at it, just look at it and give a comment about what you think about it, what you don't like about it, what you do like about it, so that we, we know that we're having some good communication. Because as a business owner, as a homeowner, I don't want to be in Pennington County because my rights are continually being taken over by the government rules and regulations that you guys are implementing.
What would that be, Stephanie? Name one.
Name one.
Name two.
Name two.
We are continually taking your rights away.
That's right.
Name them.
You're, okay, with my home, tell me how, how high my grass can be, what color my paint, what kind of roof shingles I have to have, that my foundation doesn't meet this criteria.
That's homeowners' negotiations.
No, it was on, it was on...
We're the city of Rapid City. Pennington County doesn't do that. Next one.
Okay, Pennington County. Let's go back to Pennington County, my house, my land north of the mall, and I had 80 acres there, and I was bringing in another trailer there. And then, all of a sudden, county says, no, you have to pick that trailer up, move it clear up on the other side of that pasture, and put a road all the way through there, and you need to put another well and another septic system up there. That's what I got from North Rapid, up there. And it's like, no, I'm not going to do that. So, you know, it ended up being able to split the other way, so that I didn't have to do that ridiculous things that was asked of me.
Okay, that's one.
Okay, septic systems.
You know, and we can get into that, you've already heard my opinion on that, so...
Okay.
Cleaning up your septic system, so I have, and everyone else in the county has water to drink, doesn't bother me in the slightest. Next one.
I don't have a dirty septic system.
No, we're making sure of that.
No, I don't have a dirty septic system. Are you going to pay for everybody's septic systems?
If you're living along the creek, I guess you could apply for it.
What makes you think that what you're going to spend is going to be enough?
What makes you think it's not?
Where's the proof?
It's the same revolving argument.
Okay, will you, will you look at the local controls rather than if, why do you, okay, here's a question. Do you think federal regulations have better answers than local regulations?
I wish the federal government would stay out of everybody's life. Tell that to the 55% of the people that voted for this administration, and then his 50 czars that he's appointed. Tell that to them. Don't tell it to us, we know that.
Well, how, what are you going to do to change it so that we're doing local regulations rather than federal regulations? What needs to happen?
What would you do if you were a county commissioner?
I would not, the things that are illegal and against the Constitution, as far as private property rights and we're John Locke rights, I would institute those things from the land council folks, so that it protects people's property. And then, I went down to Pier and testified on some issues there, and you've, you were right there, Lindell. You say that the legislators told you you had to do that. They are rubber stamping a lot of things that are coming from the EPA, from, from the Department of Labor, from all the different regulatory groups. But that doesn't mean that we just sit and take it and say, you know, that's, that's all right. That's, there's the 10th Amendment Center where that group works through them to get good legislation to protect people's property rights. So, I become a student of the Constitution to try to get the word out there to protect the property rights. And I'm not trying to beat you up, I'm trying to give you information, because my rights have been violated by the city and the county.
Yes, sometimes the county and the city have to violate your rights, because your neighbor has rights also. You see? You don't get it, do you?
Thank you for your, I, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
I believe I said before, this is my second county commission meeting. I volunteered my time to look into an item when I saw it in the Hill City paper. I called you, then I called George Farabee. These last two county commission meetings, you can feel the dislike from people, and it's really uncomfortable for being here a second time. The first time I was uncomfortable, and this time, I'm uncomfortable. As we've all said, we can agree to disagree, and somebody said we aren't giving solutions. I think I've been respectful with my concerns. My solution would be to stop accepting government money. We shouldn't be into this. This, in my opinion, this is personal responsibility. And no different, I guess, when you've talked about the septic systems, I know a couple years ago, there was a septic ordinance that came out, and if people didn't have a septic system in compliance, they were made to take out their septic system and replace it, if I'm not correct. And, and I could be wrong, but I, that's what I've heard, at their own expense. So, yet, we are continuing, if these people who are applying for septic systems know that, they don't even have one, they could be contributing to the problem, and yet, we're rewarding them with a septic system, instead of letting them have, you know, taking personal responsibility for anything, they could be contributing to the water. So, I guess if you're looking for solutions, my solution would be possibly treat the people who don't have septic systems the same way you treat people who have a septic system that's not working correctly, but make them responsible for their property and, and their situation. So, and maybe we wouldn't have to have government intrusion in every other aspect if, that, I guess that didn't make sense. Just make people accountable for their own actions, and, and personally responsible for their own properties. And if this is a recreational site like at Bluing, then that whole area should maybe go in together and take care of their own septic and waste system, and, and charge a, a fee to park your trailer out there, have your trailer out there, and those guys within a group take care of their own problem, and make it their responsibility.
Actually, I think we agree truly, but what happens when they won't do it?
Well, what...
They have the government intrude in their personal property, their property rights.
Okay.
So, you see, it, it's not that easy.
Well, but, but you just said, what happens if you don't? What happens if a regular landowner who lives out somewhere, and that place that comes out and checks your septic system, and they pull it, and something happens, and you make them put in a new one? Do you, I mean, isn't, isn't that what's happening too? I've, I've heard of...
The only time that I've ever heard, now, I may be wrong, and I haven't heard about all of them, but the ones that I've heard about are people that are using old car bodies for septic tanks, 55-gallon drums, that kind of thing. They don't have septic systems in drain fields, per se. They have the old, old, whatever it took to hold it, deal back 30, 40, 50 years ago when they put them in. And there is some of that out there.
Well, and that should be corrected, but I've also, I also was...
And I don't agree totally with the septic.
I was up at Johnson Siding one time, and I heard a couple talking about how theirs was just fine, and somebody pulled it, and then something came loose, and they had to put a new one, and they were talking in excess of thousands and thousands of dollars, which they had to put into. And all I'm saying is, if these people need a septic system enough to ask us to pay for it, perhaps they need to pay for it themselves. Thank you.
Ellen, see, if you remember, just a little while ago, I mentioned that statement, and I said, I brought that up in our organization that says...
And I do want to thank you all for postponing this, this 80-some thousand dollars. Thank you very much for doing that.
Comment was made about answers, and whether I like it or not, there is an ordinance in place, and unfortunately, Ron left, but if there's really a concern about septic systems on Spring Creek and distributaries, you folks can really easily use that mechanism. Pick a distance, one-eighth mile, one-quarter mile, pick a distance from Spring Creek, and you can target every residence within that distance to Spring Creek distributaries, and find out if there are any septic problems. And if there are, then the landowner, by regulation, ordinance has to fix them. So, you got the ordinance, which I just, obviously disagree with, but go ahead and use that ordinance. Rather than hiring, or rather than looking for volunteers to step forward to cost-share an application, and rather than spend mega bucks, mega bucks for consultant to help out, you folks can disorder it done. Pick a distance from the creek, distributaries, and say, every septic, septic system in the next year will be pumped and inspected. Any problem with that, Ron?
I hope that's what we're doing. I, that's my suggestion along Rapid Creek. So I hope that's what we're doing, along Rapid Creek.
Well, for your planning director, you can direct him to do that.
There's no sense going out north of Walton, 20 miles, and inspecting the septic thing, or out to your place.
Correct.
Although, you know, we could start targeting you.
Would, would you, please? I'll, I'll beg you. Please.
Anybody else? I want to be the last one.
Again, my name is Bruce Meister, and, you know, I, I feel for you guys. I want to thank you for being here, and I want to thank you for the decisions that you made. Some of them I liked, I don't think there was much I didn't like today. But anyway, I wanted, wanted to come up and thank you for being here.
Thank you, Bruce. Anyone else? Now I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried.